Okay, welcome everyone. Today is the 11th of May 2022. This is a special meeting of the Wellington Board of Education. And we will officially call this meeting to order. And this is meeting only has really one item on the agenda of content, which is the educational specifications for the school building committee. And then we'll have present to speak at the end after that. So. Oh. If you want to take it away, Phil, I'll keep letting people in from the waiting room.
Yeah, I had sent after the last meeting. I had sent you all. I just wanted to start where we had left off. I sent you my presentation. I sent you. The I think it was Tracy did ask for a full example of Ed specs and that was I think I sent you Mansfield's. And I think I sent you three, four, five, six videos, something like that. They're short YouTube videos that were about 21st century learning skills. So I figured I'd start there and see if you had any questions on what was sent out. That was like, I don't know, four, six, seven, eight, something like that, right after that last meeting. And then if there were any other questions about the presentation from last, oh, it also had the YouTube link in it. If you had any questions from what was discussed last time, any aha moments, things that you wanted to add before we start with the remainder of things tonight? Herb has his hand up.
I did, and I was trying to unmute him and I can't. I can ask him to unmute.
I'm unmuted.
Okay, there you go.
Hi, you heard Erica. Was there gonna Phil, the last time? I think I mentioned something about the auditorium. And I think you had some trouble with your, your computer or something and you went off offline during my mentioning. Of that. I was interested in what our plans are as far as an auditorium is concerned. Right now we have a gymnasium and a stage, which is really not. It works out, but it's not the best way to go. And if we're building a new, new school, hopefully. Is there any opportunity to include a small? Auditorium or a theater and a round or, or something. I think it would be nice for the students that participated in that, in those events to have something, you know, fairly nice. And, and it would put us on a par with a lot of other schools too. I've seen a lot of, a lot of middle schools around Connecticut this, this year and. Most of them have a pretty, most of them are pretty nice, you know?
Yeah.
It's an extra cost, you know, and we're a small town and all that, but. We could use it not only for school events, but also for town events too.
Yeah, it's so we're going to talk about it tonight. It's one of the things for as far as spaces go and what we've identified. It's definitely on the list. I'm going to show you some pictures tonight of something I found. I'm sure it costs quite a bit of money, but it's actually pretty impressive. But it'll definitely be on for tonight for spaces. But there's, that's one of the things that you can definitely ask for. The state may, may not. Fund it, but it's something you could, you could propose, you could, you know, you could ask for people to vote with, with or without the, the auditorium as an option. And that'll be once, once we get some feedback from the state. I'm not sure if they're going to see us till June or July. Once we get some feedback from them, we'll know what they'll support. And then we'll be able to, to kind of drill down a little bit deeper, but it's definitely on the radar for sure. And that's the board. You could make that recommendation that, you know, that's the, the board wants. You can put it in your ads back and say, this is something that we would request. I'll show you some examples where you can duplicate space without having a separate auditorium that's only used, you know, a few times a year.
So when it's proposed as a town, it could be a separate item and the town could vote.
I believe so. Yes, yes. Any other? Oh, sorry, Michelle. Okay. Did you, did anyone have a chance to watch any of the videos? If you, if you have not, take the, take a few minutes at some point to watch those. It just gives you, they're short. It just talks about instructional spaces and what people are looking for. It's actually pretty informative. I've watched a bunch of them. Nope, I don't want to do that. Click the wrong thing slideshow. There we go. Okay, so. The, the plan for tonight, I want to go through and kind of take some of the feedback that you had last time. And, and start to show you how it's spelled out now. And if you looked at the Mansfield document, you saw the grids in there as far as space, the actual square footage. That'll be your last step. So once you get through tonight. I will finalize some things and then you're going to get basically the Wellington Ed spec from the feedback that you've given, the things that I've given you, the staff feedback, which I'm going to go through with you tonight. You'll see the full Ed spec draft. And then you'll be able to give feedback from that document. It's like 60 pages long, something like that at this point still. It's, it's pretty long, but it's got things in that you've already talked about. And I have some answers as far as like, you know, geothermal, things like that for you as well. So again, the, the purpose of the ads specs there, we're going to really talk about the programs tonight. And what those, when we talk about programs that translate to spaces. We'll talk about what that environment looks like and some of the things that the staff is giving feedback on. And then start to get into some of the spatial requirements. And when you get into the spatial requirements, I didn't put the square footage on for you tonight. Because I think it clouds the, the, the purpose of what we're doing. But there are, when Scott Pelman has given me, and he has a program, it basically what the equates to what the state looks at for square footage size for a classroom, things like that. And there will be square footage tied to each of the items and you'll see that as we go. So the other thing I wanted to point out was that this is all again tied to your framework. And so, you know, when we start talking about why we're doing this and what it's tied to. Making sure we provide the necessary, necessary, necessary resources. For our students and staff and what they need to have a good education space. That the spaces are responsive, responsive to student learning needs in their styles. And that we're giving that safe environment and that it's welcoming. So I'm pulling those directly out of your beliefs because this, this piece, this framework is actually part of your overall Ed specs document. There we go. So let me get into the feedback. So I sent. The staff. A survey, a Google survey, and we got some feedback about what they thought with the current buildings provided efficiency. And supported teaching and learning. And then what were the, some of the things that got in the way? And then what were some of the things that they would really want to see? If we were to, to do a project and it doesn't matter whether that project is new or renovation. It's what they would be looking for either way. So this is the, what they, the attributes that they identified. Currently that support teaching and learning. So they talked about flexible seating. Hi Brianna. They talked about flexible seating and really I, I think I can pick out. And I don't know who respond, how they responded. It was anonymous. But I can pick out like, okay, this is probably a center school person or a hall school person. They have a lot more opportunities for flexible seating at center school. I know that. And that also goes to number two. So bathrooms in classrooms, meaning pre K K. That could come from a first grade teacher. It depends on what you would want to do. It does take away square footage from a classroom. In those lower level areas, that's one of the attributes. When we have those bathrooms and classrooms, the lower level, the teacher saw as important. They have their sound system and the sound system, I guarantee this is coming from, from center. It's used there a lot more than it is hall. It's not as in as many classes, I think at hall. And that's again, I think I just talked about this last night at our board meeting. And this is the amplification system. So that's something again, you would build into your Ed specs, you would want that. You know, as you, if you were to do a renovation or a new building, this is something that the staff sees as a benefit. The Promethean boards that you did last year was listed. This is was hot a couple of years ago and it's now like the norm. The water bottle filling stations are really important. We have them in set both schools, several locations. And so there was even a request like, can we put one of these in our classroom? Like it's a little pricey for that. But it's, this is one of the things that they see as, as a benefit. And some kids aren't necessarily leaving the classroom constantly to go get a drink of water and come back. They can fill up their water bottle and they could be in class where we want them learning. They saw the UA spaces and they didn't list all the UA spaces. They listed the, the gym and I, I think that was probably more, this is more of an HMS comment. Because I think the gym at CES is probably undersized. And so the, having what they called a full gym at Hall, a large band room and a really good sized library. I think the library at Hall School is actually oversized. But you would be able to, the, those are things they saw as benefits, things that you could really do something in those spaces. Simple thing that came up several times or just the communication tools that they have, the portable radios, the telephones. Those, that's an expectation. I think that I read into this comment a little bit. That we have in our CIP plan, the improved security. Output ability, which is like the, the speaker system, the strobe, the better, you know, is speaker into the classroom. That's in our CIP plan and I'm kind of reading into this that they want to see that as an improvement. And that's why they only listed those things. They felt, and I think this is both schools, plenty of wall space to hang a student work on. And, and the central location to the office for UA. I think that's more of a center school thing. Cause if you think about Hall School, where the art room is for some of the classrooms, the art room is at Hall is. Pretty much as far as you possibly could travel from some of the fifth and sixth grades and actually all the classes that, you know, that where their home rooms are. So I think that's the, that is a, something that's directly connected to center. And that's something that came up as, as a recommendation for future. They would want that to be. In a new space that they were low centrally located. The, this came up, storage was a hot topic on both sides of this, whether it was kind of a pro or, you know, what we have and what we don't have. There are certain classrooms that have lots of cabinetry. And certain classrooms that have very minimal cabinet, cabinetry. Something that we talked about with the, when the SBC group did the tour to Birch Grove, we talked about storage. And the teacher said, we wish we had a little more storage than we have now. It's really something important to consider to make sure that we have enough storage. I think this comment is tied to the classrooms that have those large cabinets and have the additional things where others might not. Things in a classroom, I think is they see it as a pro. This was an interesting one because this was, the next one was listed as a pro and an issue. Half tile, half carpet. I'm going to assume this is a center school. One, because we, we don't have as, as I don't think there's as many or if any at Hall. There's certain people that love the half tile, half class, half carpet. There's certain people that want entirely tile and there's certain people that want entirely carpet. So. It's listed as a pro here. It's a decision you have to make and Brianna can attest to this and can attest to this. That, you know, when you start talking about classrooms and spills and cleanups tiles easier. You can always wash a, you know, movable rug, but it's. You can go either way on this one. And then the last thing that they had as a pro was separate rooms for intervention and special education. Those, whether it's an office space that they brought up or it's a, a space for pullout instruction. That's a little bit smaller than a classroom or an intervention space. Those were pros, things that came up. So any questions, this is just what they highlighted from their survey. I can share the entire answers with you if you'd like. There, there were 16 responses. And I tried to just give you a snapshot of the themes. There were some other, I know what I would say, a little more random thoughts. But these are the main themes that came up. Any comments about any of these?
I have a question about the intervention and the special education. Do they have any specific needs where they have to example, be a room with the door that's closed so that they can have more quiet? Or do they always have to be in the same location? A lot of times you build in flexible space for different usages. And I'm assuming that these two have some specific needs that couldn't use flex space. Is that correct?
Right. And so, you know, they're placed where we can fit them right now. Whereas if you're going to renovate or you're going to build, you're going to place them specifically. So when, when we toured Birch Grove, they were in spaces that were, and you're going to see this in their recommendations. Is that you want a special education classroom that's close to a general education classroom? The reason for that is if a student has to come out for pullout instruction, the longer the walk, right? The, the last time they're in the classroom. And you want that teacher to be able to collaborate with the classroom teachers, the general education teachers. The closer they are, the more they collaborate, the farther away, the harder it is. So I, I, that's kind of the point of it, Michelle. I think their point in this was that. I don't know that it was always this way, that they had this space. And they found that, you know, when you do small groups and you can pull out. Students for small group instruction, some of the flexible space becomes the special education classroom. So they can pull students out for a small group and have a pair of professional working in a one corner. A special education teacher do it, working in another corner. It just, they see this as a really important piece. That no matter what happens in the future, they really are looking for those spaces themselves.
Laura, I see your hand.
Yeah, okay, I'm not muted. So I, well, I have a question about the central location. So this is. Put here as an attribute, right? So this is. A good thing that the office is a central location for UA and I, and I'm just not understanding.
It's not necessarily UA, the office. It's picture, the center schools, there's, they see UAs in the center of the building. Whereas Hall School, I, that's not a comment for Hall School. That's my opinion. I don't think they wrote that for Hall School. I think that a center school person wrote that the UA classes are near. In the central location and so is the office. The, if you, and one of the things we talked about when we walked Birch Grove was in, in several committee members commented on this. Was that when you walked into Birch Grove, the office is right there. But literally, I mean, it felt like the longest walk ever from the law, farthest point. To the office, it was on one end of the building. You'd have to go to the absolute opposite end of the building. It's a long ways away. They're saying that they, having the office in the UA classes, and again, I'm saying this is center school as a central point. Is a benefit. I don't see that either of that, those things are true for Hall.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because when, when you talked about the art, anyway, I thought you were talking about Hall. And having been in the furthest point from the office at Hall. And also when I was at the STEM school, I was literally the furthest classroom from the office. I, I just wasn't quite understanding. But I agree that a central location would be very nice. I was wondering if there was any feedback as far as the attributes of the, the, the science labs. And the prep areas for the science labs that Hall has.
Nothing came in on this, but they made comments on the recommendations for storage spaces. And that was really one of the comments was a greenhouse for the storage or a greenhouse in a storage facility or, you know, storage space between. The science labs, but that was really the only comment, nothing as a pro in this. And again, I didn't force people to do this. This went out. They had the opportunity to do this. They wanted to. I don't know who completed and who didn't. I can guess a couple of people from their responses. But nothing in, in this is a, as a, you know, what they see is, is providing efficiency.
Okay, because, because I, I would have said that was a pro.
At Hall School, I agree.
I think that the, the two science labs, the way that's set up is, is I loved it. I thought it was beautiful. So.
Phil, I have a question in regard to. The classroom size, is that something that is regulated by the? State? Or can we determine the size of classrooms? Our, our rooms probably would be larger than a regular classroom. Stuff like that. And also in the case of security. The doors, is that regulated also by the architect and the state? And the ventilation system in these rooms that is so important.
So I'll work backwards. I, I'm not sure I have heard anything about ventilation, but they're going to want you to have very high. And, you know, good ventilation in your buildings, especially because of COVID. I believe they just approved ventilation is one of the things they'll now reimburse for projects. Moving forward, it's one of the things that didn't used to be reimbursable. And now there, I believe they're moving in that direction to do that. What was your other question, Herb? The old classroom size, the classroom size is regulated by students. So elementary students, they give us. They give an amount of square footage per person, per student. And they just say, do the same thing for middle school. You can stretch rooms a little bit larger or you can make them a little bit smaller. To make up for square footage elsewhere. But typically they're, you know, I want to say between seven, eight, 900 square feet, depending on what the classroom is. Yes, an art room or other spaces tend to be a little bit larger depending on. How, how that's written out, but all those square footage amounts are what you're going to see. Put into the final document and I'm going to say the final document is really the first full document you'll see. You'll see the square footages are tied there. I did not make those up. Those are straight from what Scott Pelman would recommend based upon the size. We have and the size of the spaces that we currently, currently have. And is his experience dealing with the state and what would be an appropriate size.
Brianna has her hand up.
Hi, a couple of quick things. Wall space to hang student work should be everywhere, I think. That means in classrooms and hallways too. And central locations, that's important. And some of those cabinets, it would be great if they had locks on them because then you could put cleaning supplies in there and student files are supposed to be locked up all the time. And I'm going to try not to say teeny tiny things, Michelle, every single time a slide comes up, I promise. But your question was about the rooms for intervention and special education. I just wanted to say that those people have a lot of materials that they need to store and have access to. So it's not like those folks can be on a cart and move around. They need their own space, sometimes for their student safety, wellbeing and so forth, but also for their things. So. Separate space for them is important. Yeah.
Yeah. One of the things that you have to be careful with, with hanging student work is the fire marshal. There's a, there's literally an amount of student work that you're paper per square footage of hallway. Schools tend to. Get away with a little bit more, I would say than they're supposed to, but it's something that we're supposed to be aware of is, is how much paper combustible material that's in the hallways and on the walls in classrooms.
What about mixed media art?
I agree with you, Brianna. That student work on walls is important. I'll, I'll leave it at that. How's that sound? Can I move on to the next one? Okay.
Um, hold up, hold on one second. I want to make sure I can see everybody's hand because Ann, Ann was off my screen. Go ahead, Ann.
Um, so one of my concerns when we were in Talend was. I always had an emergency window in my classroom, you know, that kind of opened like a door with a latch and I didn't notice that at all. Are there any regulations about that or?
That's on my list to still find out. I don't have the answer to that one yet, Ann, but it's on my list to find out. I'm curious too. I have to assume. That because there's no emergency windows in those rooms in Talend. It, that it meets code. They couldn't, they wouldn't build it if it didn't meet code. So.
Okay, thank you.
I have one other question is the second bullet on your list. That's kind of expensive, isn't it? Should you have a bathroom in? Classrooms? And how many bathrooms do we need?
You'll see it when we get further down the list, Herb. But it's, I think what we did was we did, when I put them into spaces, we put them in pre K and K rooms only. Not anything higher than that. The rest of the bathrooms would be group bathrooms.
Okay.
It is more expensive for sure and you lose space.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so this was the list of what are the attributes of the current building that limit your efficiency? And so. There's a couple that go hand in hand. So the first two really, this is a center school issue and I know it is. Grade level classrooms are, are separated. And the reason for that is that the upper wing at center school is not accessible. Via a wheelchair, you have to go outside and, and come back in the door. So what that means is on the lower level, we have to have everything accessible. So there is a pre K through four, at least one pre K through four teacher on the lower level. So those students can access the gym, the, their classroom, the cafeteria, the office, the nurse, all of those areas. It used to be that there was a lift there. It was taken out many years ago and was never replaced. So the upper wing at center school is not accessible. And so that is what this is tied to. And the, the first piece of that, that's why that's important is we move people every summer. Depending on our numbers of students, we, and, and who's teaching what grade. We end up having to move classrooms and that means there's a fourth grade teacher upstairs and there's a fourth grade teacher downstairs. And again, we talked about distance. If you can just pop next door and you can collaborate, it's so much easier than having to walk from one end of the building to the other. And even in a small school such as center, it, it, it's inefficiency. So they identified that. The teacher workroom is not centrally located. They identified, I believe that would be Hall School. It is away from certain classrooms. It's a, it's a bigger building. So that would make sense. Unable to manage temperature of rooms. I would make an assumption that is probably both buildings. Without central air, without, you know, high efficiency heating and older thermostats. They can manage things, but it's, it's not phenomenal. It needs, definitely needs some work. Or limited and, and I would add no ventilation. There are certain spots that don't have ventilation. So something that they identified. Definitely something that you would do if you had a new building or renovation. Awkward levels and confusing layout. I have to assume that's Hall School. And there was another comment that was tied to that was like on stairwells that were confusing and, and where they were and where they popped out and things. That is also tied to that dark hallways in classrooms, the dark hallways. There are some hallways at specifically at Hall that are not typically as wide as you would make a hallway. You would never build a school the way that the back hallway is right now, where the boiler room is located. And that is the transition hallway between some of the special education teachers, the art room. The steam classroom and the other classroom. So. It is dark. There's no windows there. You want as much natural light as possible. And then there, there's limited natural light. They wrote classrooms because again, I'm targeting Hall School because that's the one that doesn't have all the windows. That there's a couple of classrooms that have basement type windows, the smaller eight inch casement windows. And that's all they have. Classroom furniture doesn't allow flexibility in groupings. That's could be a bunch. I would assume that's more of a Hall School question, a comment. Some of the classrooms at Hall School have the desks that have the chair attached. When you're moving those, it's not easy. They're, they're not on wheels. It's got the basket underneath. They're really unwieldy. And so I, you know, makes sense that that's there. Not enough storage space. That could be both buildings depending on, on your, your classroom. I will say, I also think that is tied to. And it's in the next slide, the, it's tied to the, the need for joint grade level. Hallway kind of storage. So if they had a closet and they could put materials in there that were not out of their classroom. Used a couple of times per year that they can move things in and out of that they're shared. That's something they would be requesting. Shared spaces. I, I can guarantee this is probably a, a center school thing. The music and art room is a shared space at center school. OT and PT and it's not on here, but I will say a couple of the special education offices, offices. And intervention spaces have been moved probably every year for the last five years at center school because. If they need a classroom, they lose it. If we need to move a space. It's, it's what happens. So those people don't necessarily have their own spaces. And it creates a challenge. Spanish has moved a bunch of times. They had a classroom. They don't have a classroom. They're on a cart. And that's one of the things that they see as, as. They had a classroom, they don't have a classroom, they're on a cart, um, and that's one of the things that they see is is an issue. The book mall uh, is that big giant bookcase at in Center School along that wall. It's in the cafeteria. Probably not the best case for uh, place for it. If we're gonna do something again, it definitely would not be placed there. They see it as negative. Um, special education rooms, locations are are far from classrooms. I'm going to assume that is more of a. It could be both buildings, but I would s- assume that's more of a Hall School. Uh, identification, simply because there's a couple of their locations are are much further away. Um, but center schools are not typically, if you had a teacher that was working in third and fourth. Grade special education, their classroom space or office would be right at those third or fourth grade classrooms. Um, and that's really what you're looking for. Um, so they're saying that 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 is a, and uh, something that doesn't work for them. Uh, the workroom is the same uh, room as the lunchroom. Pretty straightforward. There's only one conference room in both buildings. And this has become an issue for meetings. If there's a PPT and they wanna have a team meeting. Um, and we're using every space, so the Spanish teacher goes into the classroom, they can't use that classroom. Though trying to find spaces for whether it's um, a a meeting uh, with parents or. Whether it's a day to meeting internally, or it's a small group that you wanna bring a student, a group of students to um, for lunch. There's not a lot of spaces to opportunities to do that. Uh, limited grade level storage for materials, I already touched on that. This is a big one, um, minimal electrical outlets in classrooms. Um, realize when when these spaces were put in, um, it's been a while. So there are many classrooms that have two outlets, one in the front of the room and one in the back of the room. It it is a rarity where there's been, there've been added uh, outlets. And one is one room is a kindergarten room because at one point it was a computer lab, and when they wired the computer lab at Center School. They added all the outlets. Well, that's nowadays, uh, two outlets, one in front, one in back is not sufficient. And so um, that would be something obviously that would have to change because you'd have to meet code. There are certain classrooms that don't have hot water, um, in their sinks, um, and that's something that that they identified. Um, and then classrooms and meeting rooms are not acoustically friendly. I think that's across both buildings, but I'll give you one example that. Um, one of the classrooms at Center School is underneath the gym. Um, and so when Mr. Phillips is teaching dribbling, and the kids are bouncing the basketballs. I would do observations in there, and that's a tough space. It's been an intervention room, it's been a classroom. I'm told the students get used to it. I believe they get used to it. Um, it's not ideal though. It's nothing you would ever build like that ever again if you were gonna do that again. Um, the other part of that is the conference rooms, um, specifically the one at Center School, is directly next to the gym. So again, when kids are running around, they're playing music, you're sitting in a in a conference room in a meeting. And you're listening to all the fun happening in the other room. Um, so those are the things that they identified. Again, it's not everything. Um, it's the highlights of uh, and kind of the things that we saw repeated. Um, any comments, questions about any of these?
Not seeing any hands. I think a lot of these were more self-explanatory.
Yeah, and I don't think these are surprises either. Okay, so. What features would be important if we wanna, if we renovated or built a new school? So this is what they were identifying then. Um, and again, these are theme based. I pulled things together. Um, and they're tied to, obviously, you would wanna go back to what they saw as uh, deficits and make sure that they were addressed. Um, in a new building, if you could. Um, some of them you're required to, um, but others could be by choice. With these, uh, they were looking for outdoor learning spaces, opportunities, uh, whether it be a garden or a courtyard. Uh, or picnic areas, you know, the picnic area could be for grouping, you know, classroom instruction, small group instruction. Outside could also be for students to eat outside the cafeteria, depending on the layout of your building. Um, something that I I will show you later slide. They were looking for a fenced blacktop and age-appropriate playground and the um. I think their point is because this was for both schools, uh, this would be more than one playground. Because obviously, if you do a pre-K through eighth grade, there, it's more than one playground, has to be. It's different. The year-round comment, and um, this was a really a a good comment, I thought that was, it was a a good recognition by whoever wrote it. So, we close our playgrounds in the winter, and the reason you do that is because. For liability, when you had to have to have a certain amount of wood chips, um, depth. And they can't be frozen. If the ground is frozen, and it it it's, you don't have your depth of, you know, fall prevention. Um, your playground needs to be closed, which is why we closed the playground in the winter, and we don't use it. Um, for a while, and someone said, well, some years our playground is closed from November to April. It's a mighty long time. Um, and so, you know, we know play is so important. And so the year-round comment, I think what their recommendation is, and it's super expensive. Um, is the rubberized surface. So some sort of surface that would allow you to utilize your playground year round. Obviously, if there's snow, you're not using it. Um, but when that snow melts, or if it's just cold outside, and you can still use it, I think that's the point of their comments. So I thought that was well taken. Uh, all outdoor fields on site. I'm quite certain this is an HMS person. Uh, because the baseball field is directly in front of me out of my office right now, um, not on site at Hall. Separate Boston parent pickup drop-off area, uh, I I would assume this is both schools. Um, Center School is obviously better now. Um, when this, if the staff member's leaving at the end of the day though, and the buses are there, could be a paraprofessional. They're going around buses that's during dismissal. It's hard, not something you would design the way either way. Although Center is way better than Hall. Of the, i- it's just hard, specifically with Route thirty-two being there, it's hard. Uh, ample parking for all staff. And the uh, big caveat to that on several comments was without crossing Route thirty-two. Um, Hall School loses some of their parking because of the way the bus loop is. Um, and and have, we've had, we have so many parents doing drop-off and pickup right now, that we just need the space back there. So, a significant number of staff members are across the street at Hall, um, and you know, they've said that the spaces are narrow. Um, I'm not sure about that part, but crossing Route thirty-two is is challenging. Uh, adequate lighting, um, and this was, they used the word adequate, I think. And um, I think their point was interior and exterior and 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 really getting to that. We wanna have the spaces bright and cheery, um, and you know, we put in fewer light bulbs years ago with that um, project. They're all two bulbs instead of three, it's supposed to be the same wattage, but it is darker. Um, which is why you want the balance of energy efficiency of LED with the natural light. Which is the next one, natural light throughout the building, that was a common theme, came up several times. Obviously, it's gotta be handicapped accessible, but that's um, something that that came up several times. It sounds strange that we have to say ventilation, but we do. Um, ventilation, heating and cooling, that's appropriate. Um, that works, that's controllable, um, that provides energy savings, all those things are are made sense. Uh, there was two comments around covered entrances and exits, whichever way you wanna say it. Um, and it's something that I put forward, I think to CIP, uh, a couple of years ago, we talked about. Doing covered exits over the awnings, like they're like metal awnings, kinda like our carports, over the walkways. A- and someone else put it in a different frame, and they said, you know, it'd be nice to have something that was along the building. Um, if there was a wall that you didn't n- need windows on. Um, if you could put an awning, so that was a space, you could go under uh, on a rainy day and be outside, but you know, not be soaking wet. So, it's kinda two, two different things there. Uh, grade level classrooms in close proximity, I think I've, you know, talked enough about that already. Appropriate number of staff bathrooms, uh, I think that's a challenge at both schools, to be honest with you. It's not, wasn't something that really was seen as uh, critical. Um, and and you typically don't want your staff using the same bathrooms as your students. Excuse me, um, common areas for small groups. Right now, when you walk through the hallways of both buildings, oftentimes you'll see small groups of kids working in the hallways. Um, they might be sitting there with their Chromebooks, they might be uh, have it, you know, have dragged their chairs into hallways. Um, common areas for small groups are are, uh, you know, the breakout groups, you're gonna see that in a couple of minutes. Um, built into our spaces. Um, so that's, that's a common theme. Outstanding Wi-Fi and technology, pretty fair statement, uh, we rely on that. Um, you saw my frustration last meeting, when I did not have a great, and I was plugged in. Um, so knock on wood that that we keep going the way we are tonight. Uh, which is fair, outstanding Wi-Fi and technology, again, impacts learning, storage for materials, I've I've covered. The meeting rooms, I think I've covered, conference and small group areas, that's something that they've identified. Furniture for all that allows flexible groupings. Um, at Birch Grove, teachers were allowed to select. From a variety of things they wanted for their classrooms, uh, on top of their classroom chairs. So they had typical chairs, but then they also had things they could choose from, little ground rockers, they had um. Uh, like little wobble seats uh, that are really engage your core. There's a couple options that they have. Um, and then the office space for service providers. We've moved OT and PT a bunch of times at both buildings, i- it's, you know, I think. And I don't know if they're the ones that wrote it, but any of our service providers need a space, they need a home. Uh, they need a small office, they need a closet, whatever it is. Even if they're there part-time, a closet is where they're, they can go and drop their stuff, they can pick up the materials where they, what they need, and they can go. Um, it can be a shared space, but we don't wanna keep moving them or um, you know, have to take it from them. Right now, we have many people who have offices in closets, um, and that's just not the way you you do it. Questions about their feedback about um, you know, what what the features they think that would be important.
Go ahead, Donna.
So my question has to do with crossing Route thirty-two. Um, I seem to recall that. I don't know whether it was the state or the county was gonna be doing something along thirty-two, where they put in an island and. Change something with the way the parking flow was to make it safer. I don't think that's happened. Do you know? What's going on with that? Cause that that could definitely have an impact on making it easier for um. Staff to cross the street.
Yeah, I have not heard an update on it. I have seen markings on the sidewalks. I believe it was supposed to, something was supposed to happen. Um, this summer, I'm not sure if it's going to or not, but that would definitely help with the the um, pedestrian islands. I I'm telling you, I start, the majority of my days, I start at Hall School, and every single day, we have somebody go through there doing fifty-five miles an hour. Um, and it's, it's dangerous, so you know, I think we've done what we can on our end. But it's it's definitely something that's supposed to be in the works, Donna.
Thank you.
Laura, I see your hand. And then Herb.
Yeah, um, so seeing the the outdoor learning spaces, you know, I'm thinking about. Um, Hall has such a wonderful location on the river and and um, for science, we always use that for. Um, nature walks and water studies, et cetera. So I'm, I mean, if we're renovating, we still have that space, that's great. If we're not. Uh, an outdoor classroom, you know, it's. Um, I saw garden, courtyard, picnic area, but I'm thinking of some type of a water feature, like a a pond or something. For those types of studies, which 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 are um, exciting and and um. You know, students get really engaged and and really good learning. So that that was just a thought. Um, I lo- I love to see the outdoor learning space. I'm wondering if anybody mentioned having Wi-Fi that extended out. To the outdoor classroom.
I don't think it's in there yet.
Okay, cause and then and then my last piece, um, is you know, I I was at Barrow's um, STEM Magnet School. And I'm wondering if if you, if anybody has has looked at that um, facility. Because it is a K eight, and it has a number of amazing features that would be a good thing to look at, at least to get ideas. Not not just in this, but also um, in the renewable energy piece that's tied into their science curriculum.
I have not, but I will.
Okay, that's it.
Herb, I saw your hand earlier.
You know, at the beginning, you mentioned something about, uh, well, in the in the bullet bullet list, you have. Ventilation, heating and uh, cooling, but you mentioned uh, geothermal. And you were investigating it and looking into it, but but I don't see it on the list here. And also, uh, is any cons- consideration or? Is this, this may be sta- staff feedback, they didn't think of the solar panels. A lot of schools are putting solar panels on, and they have been fairly successful, I guess. I don't know how they are for long term, but.
Yeah.
Were those considered at all, Phil?
So it didn't come up, um, and I don't think the the staff is as thoughtful about energy efficiency. I I think that they think more classroom-based, Herb. Um, but I did talk to Scott Pelman about how do you write it um, into your ed specs without um, you know. Pigeonholing yourself and saying, we want this, and then the cost is too much and then we can't get it. And so what he said, and and uh, this is again, something that's that we've gotta identify, there's two big things we have to identify tonight. My recommendation is gonna be that you write your ed spec, um, and this is actually from Scott too. Um, so it says, you know, you know, ener- high energy efficiency. With the potential of, you know, net zero, which means you produce your own energy. Um, which may include solar panels, geothermal, any of those, and you can write it basically generic enough, so it's in your ed spec. So if you can afford it, um, and it it it, you can do it, it's there. Um, if you can't, it doesn't mean you're not meeting your ed spec, if that makes sense.
But this is reimbursable.
I agree. Yeah, I, Herb, I honestly think that the solar panels is way more uh, reasonable. Than the geothermal or the net zero. Um, you really need a lot of thermal uh, solar panels for net zero. Um, but you would see significant savings with uh, solar panels. So that's something I think, and that's why I said, you know, you wanna say. We we are requesting in the design that, you know, whatever that their proposal is, that. You know, it, we're not gonna say no to it, just because you can't do this, but we would like to be, see the uh, the building be as energy, energy efficient as possible. Within reason, because there's a cost to it, right? Um, and so you wanna balance that out. Can't hear your mic. Michelle, we can't hear your mic. I see your mouth moving. There you go.
Hear me at all now?
Now I can.
Oh, okay, sorry. I must go faster than a click. I recognized Laura and then Donna.
Okay, I'll be quick, this is the second one, but um, I was just wondering, um, it's not in here. And I don't know if it's, if it's still going, but the TV station that was at Hall, is that something that has continued?
You will see it.
Okay, all right, so, cause I didn't see it here, and I thought that that, I mean, that was a excellent program for the students. Um, in in all sorts of ways, so, okay.
Donna, you're next.
Um, so I just would like you to double check on um, the solar panels. Because it was a few years ago, I talked to um, uh, somebody who worked, who's at the fire department. Um, not in our town, but a different town, and they indicated that when a building goes up in flames. And there's solar panels on the roof. Because of the danger, because you can't shut them off, at least at that time you couldn't, um, that they basically just let the building burn. And so I just would wanna be extra sure that um. It's not a fire safety issue.
Yeah.
Other thing I would wanna know is um, when they've lived their life. Um, and I know that the lives have have been extended, you know, it used to be that a solar panel would live, last about fifteen years. But um, the cost of disposal. And replacement, because this, I know. Um, the cost of disposal for like a car battery is significant. I don't know how it compares to the, for a um, solar panel. I just think we should have all the information so that we can make wise decisions. It may be a great thing, and it may be awful. But there's no way to know without all the information.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
I have a question that's more generic. Um, did we also ask the students what they would like? These are questions I'd love to have feedback from the students on to.
Not yet, and so what I wanted to do is have a. Not yet. And so what I wanted to do is have a core kind of set first, so we had something to work off of. And then my thought was, and this is actually my last slide of the night, um, for next steps, was really to get more community feedback. Um, so that they have a document to look at. So there's, you know, it's got the whole package together. Obviously, they can talk and present to speak, but. You know, some of the things that you identify, I think it's important that you just say, like Herb was asking about, uh, you know, theater. Is it in the ad spec or not? That that's, if you can answer that. Um, for them, it just makes life easier and then they can go, okay, don't worry about it. Um, but at least it gives us a starting point before we. Um, start soliciting.
Yeah, one of your bullets, I mean, we have uh cooling. You know, the ventilation, heating, cooling, is that uh air conditioning or?
Yes.
That effect?
Correct.
Cause I think in a lot of schools, they neglect to put in air conditioning. Especially in the offices, you know, and some of the rooms that are used during this the summertime, but. Is it going to be possible to air condition some of this new building, say the uh gymnasium or?
I think you'd see full air conditioning, Herb. I think you would see a a full heating, cooling uh ventilation package for the entire building.
Oh, that's great.
No one else? Okay, let's move on to the next slide.
Okay, so this is, sorry, I have to move you around a little bit on my screen. Um, this is where it's going to start spaces. So um, based upon what programs we currently have. Um, and the number of students we have, Scott and I have gone through and identified numbers of classrooms. Okay, and I didn't want to get into the square footage because it's 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 gets confusing and it just muddies the water. What you need to identify is make sure you are in agreement what you with what you see here or, you know. Once, do you believe it's a need, it's something you want as part of your ed spec? So your first one's a big one. Um, it's classrooms, grades, pre-K and K. Uh, I had asked Scott about um additional reimbursement and it's still not clear, but. I had asked him about additional reimbursement. If you had a uh full day pre-K program. You are supposed to get a certain additional um offset in your reimbursement. From what I understand so far, I've been told that it might only be for um priority school districts, which we are not. Something I need to dig deeper and something we'll ask when we go to the state. So the question for you is, when you see the number four, four classrooms, two for pre-K and two for K. Those would have bathrooms. You can see the bathrooms within the rooms on the next four. Would you want to consider if you were to renovate or build new a second pre-K classroom? There is a cost, an ongoing cost to it of a second teacher. A full day program is a little bit different. Um, however, if you are going to propose this, I'm gonna, it's something that I would say long-term. You would want to start to consider charging participants, which many, many, many districts do already. Um, some of, there there doesn't mean they're self-funded. It just means they're charging a minimal fee. For each student for pre-K, not kindergarten, pre-K. Uh-oh, I really got Brianna on this one. Look at, do you see that head turn and look up? Most, most school districts are charging for pre-K and so like Coventry is charging for preschool. Um, obviously, if someone can't afford it, it doesn't mean they can't go. There's, you would do it on a sliding scale based upon free and reduced lunch. There's ways that you do this. Um, it's something that you could consider. And I share that as part of if you're worried about costs and additional space, because it is an additional space. Um, then you could consider charging for it. If.
It's not something we have to decide as part of ed specs.
Correct, it's not. What I would suggest to you, what you need to know though, is because it doesn't impact square footage. If you don't want a second classroom, it takes away, you know, eight hundred square feet. And there is an extra classroom in there right now, S four. So if you, you could do this two ways. If if uh, when Scott and I go to the state. And we lay out just initial thoughts. Here are the options, renovate hall school, build on a new site. Here's our ed specs, uh, they're raw. It gives you an idea of what the board is looking at. Here's our uh enrollments. Um, would we be eligible for additional percentages for reimbursement? If we went to a full day pre-K program? They said no, because you're not a priority district. You got to make the decision here if you really want it.
Okay, so um. That's one consideration. There may be other types of funding options and things that fund pre-K separate from this. So.
For sure.
Research we need to do around the costs for pre-K beyond this, but I think what we need to focus on today is what do we need? And the one thing that jumps out at me at this is that this looks like we're increasing class size because you've got fewer classrooms than we have now. Is that right?
No, you're based upon the number of classrooms right now. Remember, this is only academic classrooms.
Okay.
So this is slide one of of the the groups. So when you talk about general ed classrooms, you're looking at eight classrooms, grades one through four.
We don't have a single one of those that has three classrooms?
Were between two and three. Were between two.
This is two classrooms per grade for each of four grades. So there's not a single one that has a third classroom.
I will go back and look, but I don't believe there there is one right now.
Second grade?
Second grade, but how many kids?
Yeah, but that's my point, is that if if at any point we have three classrooms, that's not enough.
I'll show you a way out of it.
Okay.
Okay. You're making my radar go off, Phil.
This is the, so, uh, and and a great catch, Michelle. So. This is the challenge if you were to renovate or do a new building. You are basing it on your highest enrollment of eight years projection, right? Well, if you have a bubble and you need an additional classroom. There is a way to uh a a space that I'm going to show you further down. It has a different name. And what I've talked to Scott about is we need to make sure we frame that space, so that if it needs to be used as something different. We have the ability to do that. And then what would we do with the other group? Uh, it it's a larger space. I'll show you what I mean.
Okay, I see Anne's hand still up. Go ahead, Anne.
Um, since we're building this school for the future, I think it's really important that we have enough classrooms. For the day when universal pre-K becomes um a law. Yeah, and those would be, I'm assuming they would be full-time. I'm not sure how that would look, but I think it's really important that we make sure we have that space.
Which is what I think it is right now, Anne. That's why why the two.
Okay.
So the, you can get the sense of this. So grades pre-K through K. You see the two classrooms. They all have their own individual toilets uh spaces in those classrooms. They have a common storage area. They have one breakout area in that, and that breakout area. Um, there's two pictures here. It's showing you the one on the top. The bottom one is actually Sandy Hook. Uh, it's the new handy Sandy Hook school. So that's an example of a breakout space. We saw them at Birch Grove as well. They they can look very different. Um, it's it's a little additional square footage, but you can use these for pullout. Um, this is all whiteboard over here. The girls aren't drawing on the walls. It's actually whiteboard. Um, well, maybe they are drawing on the walls, but they're supposed to be. Um, and so that would be. Uh, every, you you'd want a breakout area for this group. All right, and then grades one through four, you're looking at classrooms. You'd have two multi-stall toilet rooms, uh, a teacher workroom, lunchroom, one common storage area. That is, one common storage area is not their only storage. They would have storage in classrooms. They would have two breakout areas for this group here. They would have one resource room, which is also a flex space, okay? That's a, an actual pullout classroom. It's not a full-size room. But that could be a, you know, you need intervention near this space. You don't want the kid to walk all the way across the school. This is the space that you would use it in. This typically is uh is like a four to six hundred square foot space. Versus a classroom that's eight or nine, okay? And then grades five through eight, same type of model, okay? Number of classrooms, this meets the middle school model, which is why it's more, okay? Um, this is, does not include your science labs, Laura, so don't panic yet. It's on a different slide. Uh, teacher workroom, lunchroom, common storage area, multi-stall toilet rooms again, breakout uh areas. Uh, and one resource room. So you get the flex space for all of those. Um. This is just the number of rooms. It doesn't have a design to it. So you think about some of the designs, you could say, we we would, and this came out in actually one of the staff feedback surveys. Um, we would like it like fingers, like the the hub is the main top part. And then the three hallways coming off are the different um grade levels. So there's a a K. Two section, a three, an intermediate section, three, five, and then a middle school, six, eight model. Um, it's actually how Sandy Hook is laid out. Uh, they do have that Birch Grove laid out. It's on one level, though. It's a very spread out building at Birch Grove. Um, but it's, they're broken into their hallways. Um, so. Questions again about just this portion.
Brianna has her hand up and then Donna.
Are you gonna let your pre-K and K staff have lunch? Or do work? They've got nowhere to go.
No, it it'll be, it'll be tied to it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, I. That four classroom, just having two per grade makes me nervous. I'd much rather see. An opportunity for there to be a third somewhere, if there needs to be. And I expect that um our preschool program does, it has to serve the. Children who need it, needs service, right? So.
Well, not necessarily. You could, you could say, I'm not going to provide pre-K and just pay for services. You have to provide services. You don't have to provide them the services onsite.
Okay, it is my understanding that we have typically uh not many slots for modeled. Classmates?
Fifty-fifty, yep.
And we've got a whole lot of preschool age students who cannot attend our preschool. We have two sections, right? Half-day each right now.
That's correct.
Right, so I would love to boost that to four half-day sections, because I think there's a lot of students. Uh, preschool kids that cannot get into our program the way it is right now, and that's not the fault of the district at all. Um, it has to do with space and staffing, like you were saying. Um, kindergarten students are much more successful when they've had some school experience. Beforehand in some way, shape or form, so especially if it's at the same school, it's a lot more comfortable for them, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so I would much rather that say five than four and then hope for two uh four full sections of half-day pre-K. And then you said to Phil that our um enrollment for kindergarten is on the rise, which I love. Were you at thirty-something now?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight in three classrooms, so you would have one pre-K. Okay. I still would want us, if we can, service more of those preschoolers.
Remember, this is really hard to hear, and I know, I know it's hard to hear.
I'll prepare.
Um, remember that your square footage impacts your reimbursement. So if you add eight hundred square feet for another room, you're adding hallway now as well, right? So you're adding a thousand square feet. You're penalized if you're having overage, which means you get less reimbursement. So any of those love, we love those spaces. We want to have that space. That's the trade-off. You have to figure out long-term, and this is why I did not put the square footage out, because you would already be in that right now. Um, and and that's going to take a conversation in itself based upon, you need to identify what you need for spaces first. And then I will show you the square footage, because you may say, uh, and and this goes back to Herb's point. Um, I, listen, I want an auditorium, okay, that's four thousand square feet. Um, and four thousand square feet just took your percentage for reimbursement from fifty-five percent to forty-eight. And Brianna wanted an extra pre-K room, and that's a thousand square feet. So now we've gone from fifty-five to forty-eight. Now we're at forty-six. They, that's how it works. So. The public will have to weigh in at some point to say, nope, we want it, or nope, we can't afford it, or yes, we can afford it. And that's, that's what's so hard about this. Like, I don't want to put square footage on the big picture until you can see everything together. And what it results in. I did write down Michelle and and Brianna, because you're the ones that spoke on it. Um, your note about the number of classrooms. I had the same question first and I I do have a solution. But eighteen is a normal class size.
Okay, so that's on another page, I'm assuming. Uh, Brianna, do you have more or can we move on to the next?
And scene, okay.
Uh, Donna and then Anne.
So my question has to do with the teacher workroom slash lunch. I thought on one of the prior slides, the part of the issue the teachers were having is they had to eat and lunch in the same place. Is it listed that way, where there really will be one workroom and one lunchroom?
It is listed that way, for the same exact reason. That I just shared. It is a, becomes a square footage challenge. So it's more of a layout. Can we create, so it's listed as one room, but can we cre- create a layout? So there's a space to eat, um, and you're not sitting right next to the laminator. Um, and uh, maybe we're spreading out copiers. The dreamy Tolland layout that we saw was one complete, I know, I know, one complete. Uh, cafeteria staff room uh to eat. They had a nursing room for for mothers. Um, and then there was a second room that was a workroom. Uh. They have more students.
No, but what my question is, in reality, is the grade one through four teacher workroom slash lunch. Going to be just a workroom and then the grade five to eight teacher workroom slash lunch would be the lunchroom? In in in, so you just have, you still have the same number of rooms. But instead of making them eat and work with the laminator. In the same room, you just separate the functions, but you wouldn't be adding a room, is what I'm saying.
Correct, we we could do it that way. It's also about space and numbers. So think about what we have right now and that people in one building are sharing a space. Um, that's that same size. Um, so I don't know if there would be enough, if the room would be big enough. I I, so you're saying make one room, a teacher workroom and one room, a lunchroom, that's correct?
Right, because that way you don't have to double up on the equipment and and.
Well.
Or, yeah, it, how many laminators could you possibly need, you know?
One, but copiers, copiers.
You'd have, you'd have to have, copiers are whole different ball of wax, you know, or uh and printers and things like that. Although with the way things are going, you know, they might just need a printer in their classroom. So they don't, you know, if they want to print something up, they can be right there and they don't have to. Um, and that way, so I was just, I was thinking about that, um. And and I too, I'm a little. Concerned, um. With the number of classrooms, because if you have a bump. Um, you're you're stuck.
Yep. Remember that, and I know that, sorry, Donna, remember that for everyone. You're not building the school for kids that are here today. In our elementary school. They would be uh upper middle school students if they even saw a a new school or a renovation. Just remember that. We're building this based upon our projections. So I might have three sections of second graders today. But realize that those kids might never see a renovated or new school. Because of the timeline. You have to build based on your projections, which is what that number of classrooms is based on. I hear you all, though.
Do we have an idea? Of the number of. Vacant building lots in Wellington? In other words, if, if we have twenty. Building lots and each one of them is only allowed to have one house on it. You kind of know. That we're not going to have another five hundred people move in.
Donna, I don't want to, I don't want to go too far down that road because that's a little perspective and building lots can always be subdivided and created. So. I don't know that that's um, exactly what we need to focus on for tonight to get through the classes, but I still see two more hands. Up, but were you finished, Donna? Or did you have other questions or comments?
No, I, I think, I think that that'll do it. I've got some things I'll wait on.
Okay, uh, Brianna, your hand's still up. Did you still have something?
I just was gonna comment on Donna's idea about splitting up the purposes of those two spaces. Sometimes teachers prep periods and lunches are ten to fifteen minutes. So the closer the facility to your classroom, the better. And in the district where I am, the copy machines and so on are way closer to the primary hallway. And the middle school teachers are always frantically going down there with lots and lots of stuff and frantically heading back and they really wish they had one down their end. So I think that would be a benefit is to have two separate workspaces. So that um, teachers could get more things done faster and closer proximity to their classrooms and sharing sometimes is a. Is an issue with time shortages too. You don't need more than one laminator, but you definitely need a whole lot of capiers that actually work.
Fair enough. Laura and then Anne.
I was saying Anne was before me.
Okay, go ahead, Anne.
Um, going back to pre-K, um, are they, are all of our pre-K kids in our projections, Phil? Are they included in our numbers or is it just the kindergarten?
No, I believe, I believe they're in there. I'd have to go back to and look at it, Anne, but I believe they're in there.
Cause that would be.
They have to be because they're only pre-K for, you know, one or two years and they would move forward.
The problem is, Anne, though, that we're limited to, but based on space, the number of pre-K that we could have now, had we had more space. Could we have taken more pre-K kids? Absolutely. So, so there's a chicken and egg here. The, the number we have in our count. Is not the full number of what we could serve, but I'm not sure that the reimbursement will reimburse us for the number we could serve. But so much as the many we are serving.
Well, I'm wondering, projections are kids in town, right, Phil? More than kids, well, okay. Cause if we, we included our pre-Ks in our projections, um, that would create more square footage.
It does. It's in there.
Okay, thank you.
He said he was looking at births too.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay.
We, we can build. You can build to the size of your highest in eight years. So that's, that's, you know, what they're, what, how they calculate.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Laura?
Uh, cut that down. Okay, I'm unmuted. Um, so I, I don't, I mean, I, I don't want to rehash this. I just, I just had to add my two cents to the number of classrooms just because when, again, when I, when I went to the STEM Magnet School, I started there its second year. Um, where we had lots of wonderful space and breakout areas. Um, and by, I was there for three years and the third year we could not find space. For different types of um, groupings of students and. It was within four years, we were already. Growing out of the school. Now, it's a different situation in that it's, it's a, well, in some ways it is, in some ways it isn't because. Um, the number of students at each grade level was capped. Um, but I, you know, it's sixty students. We had three sections at each grade level, um, capped at, at around sixty. We actually got up to like sixty-three or so. So anyway, it's just a cautionary, if there is a way to build in a little bit of leeway. Um, you don't want. To have this brand new beautiful school or brand new renovated school with all of these um, attractive. Components that bring in families to the district and within four years, we've, we've outgrown it because there's only room for two. Classrooms at each grade level. So. Um, I think we do need to think about, and, and you said you had a plan for that, which we'll hear, but I definitely, we need some flexibility there.
Yeah, and it's really at the elementary level. I mean, that's, that's where it's at. So that's something, again, when you write the ed spec, you write and say. Um, we, we would like a flexible space so that if we have to add an additional classroom, we have the ability to do that. And, and when I say add an additional classroom, I don't need, need in addition.
Change the purpose of a room.
Correct, correct. Moving on.
I believe so, unless Brianna is your hand, your hand up is just a remnant?
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
She's, she's that student.
So that, this was the.
Even there and assume, yeah, I guess.
This was the academic classroom. So this is the specialized rooms now. Okay, so you're looking at, sorry, I have to move you guys again. Not really liking what I'm doing. My apologies. Um, with the specialized classrooms, the specialized spaces. We have two science rooms, um, one prep room, which is connected to that. One steam room. One art classroom, one art storage, one kiln room. Uh, a space for Spanish, um, and that is one, not two. Um, you have an instrumental music space. You'd have two practice rooms. An instrument storage space, a chorus room and stage. You have a keyboard classroom right now, a space. Um, that's something you have to determine if you want that space, if we could build it in. Uh, again, square footage is what you would start looking at if you did that. An intervention room, a school-based health center. Uh, and then a health room. So those are the spaces. And again, what programs do you have? These are the programs you have. So this is what you would um, look at. And again, I, I always like to add pictures on the side, like. What are we talking about? We're talking about new science labs that look way different than what we've, are used to, although I agree with Laura, the, uh, science labs at Hall are decent. This is the middle picture is, is a, um, um, basically a midi lab, the, uh, that, the keyboard lab. And then you see the, the science lab on the bottom is all whiteboards all the way around. And what do you notice about the tables?
On rollers.
On rollers, lock them down. You do your experiments. You want to change the layout of your room for something, change the function. That's a big space. Everything's on rollers. You've got additional space. If you wanted to have, bring in parents for a special night and drop chairs, you could do that. Um, and it just provides that flexibility. That's why that stuff is so important. So these are the specialty spaces. Again, no square footage tied. But these are the programs you have right now. Um, where you would gain square footage going into um. A, you know, into one school, obviously there's no, no science labs at center. Um, there's no steam lab at center, but there is an art room that's shared with music. So if you went pre-K through eighth, you would only have one art room. Um, per this model. Okay, um, you'd have, the kiln room is small. Um, you'd have one Spanish space if, you know, and again, depending on what happens with our Spanish program. Um, but you're basically matching. The thing we saw in Birch Grove. Was we saw a really fantastic stage. Uh, I think it was fantastic. Um, that was connected to the gym. With a soundproof. And when I say this, uh, Anne, you can back me up. There was a group of kids that were very loud playing in the gym and we went behind the soundproof wall onto the stage. Where the music teacher's classroom was set up and it was a classroom. It, you, it was the back of the soundproof wall. Blocking the stage was whiteboard. I mean, it was a classroom. You couldn't hear those kids. So there's ways to do this and still maintain. Again, this is double dipping on space where it makes sense, where we're also providing quality. Um, and that to me was important if I, because I was like, oh, the space is back there. I want to see what this looks like. And it was impressive. Anne, can you say, second that? Did Anne leave us?
Nope, she's on mute.
She's muted.
Um, the other thing that was good about that setup is that you have this stage. Then you have the full gym and then there were doors that opened up into the cafeteria. So although it was not an auditorium, Herb. It, it allowed you to have a very large space for an audience. And then the stage, um, there was a stage. That was on the side. It opened up to the chorus room in the back.
Right.
So that it, it became your. Kind of similar to Hall School, except that there's even another room behind the. Which would be the cafeteria.
Obviously, if you did a renovation, I don't think you would be able to. Meet that type of layout that, that was at Birch Grove. But it's something you would, could ask in design. Obviously, if you renovate, you, you could ask and see what they could do. So again, we're talking about programs. What programs do you have? Art, music, Spanish, all those things. You probably noticed library is not in here, right? PE is not in here. They're in a different spot. So don't panic. I didn't chop them out.
Okay, um, Tracy, we haven't heard from you, so you can go next.
Uh, just. Just a question about the music because um. Currently, we have two and a half. Music teachers. You know, one has the band room in Hall, one has behind the stage. And then. At center, it's shared with the art room. And as far as I know, at least in the past fifteen years, that. The music teacher has never had a room or the art teacher at center. That's to themselves. So is. It still seems like we might be a little short there as far as. Um, space. And I know that the halftime person is not there all the time, but you're, you're having band. Sometimes you're having chorus. Sometimes you're having music, sometimes. And for eight grades or nine grades, so that's. There's questioning that.
Yep. And so, you know, you do have a separate space for instrumental music and chorus. Um, the thing that, you know, if, if this goes through, you'll have to look at your schedule, obviously. Because you're going to be, have a, a brand new pre-K through eighth grade schedule. Um, and part of this work also is, you know, financially at some point. Um, if this, and I hate to say this this way, but if it gets serious, I'm not going to announce, and I've said this really bluntly. Um, I'm not going to announce staffing savings and who it is and what it is until we get to a point where. Um, this is, you know, it's, but there's potential for this to really move forward. Um, and the reason for that is, you know, uh, I've hired Herb Arico. He's my, my band teacher. Uh, Herb is. Now hears that. Um, there's potential that I'm gonna cut his position because there's only going to be so many music teachers or only it's going to be so many Spanish teachers, whatever it is. Herb is going to be looking for a job. And no one's going to want to come and work for us in that meantime. So. I'm holding those things tight. Some people can probably figure out what some of those things are, Tracy. This space is what we believe we would need. To meet the music program um. That we have. Um, and uh. Whether it, and that's pre-K through eighth grade. Hard response. Yuck. Sorry.
Fair enough. Laura and Donna, I don't know who had your hand up next.
Donna, you can go.
Okay, I thought you were before me.
Oh, it's okay. I've been talking a lot.
Is the health room, health education? Or is, I want to make sure that's not the nurse's office.
No, it's health education, correct.
And then, um, this kind of piggybacks on to what Tracy just said. Currently. We have music and art going on simultaneously at two locations. If you meld them into one location, but you only have one room. There's just so much load a, a teacher could take. So, you know. I, I'm concerned that there, it's, there's going to be a scheduling nightmare. Um, because if you have chorus going on right now at Center School. Or regular band, um, I don't know, did, did, do they have band at center or just chorus?
Fourth grade, but they do it at Hall.
Okay, so, so you've got these things going on. But if you. Put them in one location, but you only have one room. Now you have to do this huge juggling to, are, are.
Art teacher's not sharing with the music teacher anymore in this model. So the art teach, art teachers at center, two days a week and at Hall, three days a week.
Okay, so that's equivalent to one person. What about the music side of it?
And so the music side of it, and that's really, I think, what Tracy's asking is, music is, is uh, point six, three days a week. And so that person then would be sharing the spaces. Um, but scheduling wise, again, we'd have to look at how many do we need? To meet the schedule that would be built if we went to a pre-K three, three building.
And then we have. Um, the school-based health, the mental health stuff. But their room can't be used by anybody else, correct? Because of.
Yeah, and it's small. They're.
Well, I, I know it's small at where it is now, but I don't know how it tra, would translate. Into a renovation or a new thing. Because that's. That's not a flexible spit. Like, there's certain rooms. Like the nurse's office, you can't decide one day that you're gonna move it somewhere else. I mean, it kind of, where it is. I would think the same thing for the kiln room. You know, there are certain ones that. When it gets fixed. That's it for a really.
It is, right.
Um, you can probably, you know, move. The uh, foreign language in the health room, swap them back and forth with no problem. So it just. Kind of depends. I was just concerned that. Combining a single schedule would cause our kids to lose out on some of the um. Specials.
No, they wouldn't. And you, you just made a point there when we start talking about, i- and it's, again, I'm not, this is not best practice, right? But it's, you start making financial decisions based upon square footage. You start looking at a steam room. You would be saying, hey, depending on how this was built, if I needed a classroom, can we make sure that steam room is near an elem, the elementary side of the building? So if we needed an extra space. Steam could go on a cart. Foreign language could go on a cart. Those are really probably the two that could go on a cart. It doesn't make it right. I'm not saying I support that at all. But it's what we do now. If we need space. Spanish goes on a cart at Center School because there's no extra room. Um, so you, you know. Art and music are shared at Center School. Uh, I know Jane Castle would love to have her own classroom. Um, it's hard. It's just, we're mashing in based upon the space that we currently have. We would, we would build the sca, build the schedule to make sure that the kids have, you know. A, a relatively consistent amount of UA.
Could you just clarify what kind of things you would find in a steam room? The other ones I feel like I would know.
Yeah, picture, a, a steam room in my eyes is more along the lines of a science lab. So you can do, it, it's, you know, a, a build break room. Um, so it's got probably the science lab tables. It's got the sinks. Um, you know, you, you've got storage for robotics in there. You could do household management in there. So it might have a washer, dryer, kitchen. All of those types of things um. Would be in that, that space.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well, that, that, that was part of my question. Um, I was wondering if the steam room was like a maker space. And. So, so I'm thinking if, if it's set up as a, another science lab and as a maker space, that actually. I mean, it could be converted into a classroom, but you have an awful lot of equipment in there that. Might not be appropriate in like an elementary classroom.
It wouldn't remain in there. It, Laura, it would become an elementary classroom.
Thinking, where would you put the stuff?
That, and that's the, that's always the issue, right? That's always the challenge. When you move somebody. You move them. I mean, it's not easy, so.
Okay, so that was, that was actually. Uh, a big part of my question. Um, the other is the keyboard class. And I'm wondering, is, is that like an instructional technology class or is that just great keyboarding?
It's this keyboarding in the picture.
So you would have a keyboarding teacher?
It's built into the schedule. It's, it's not a standalone.
So the classroom teachers would be teaching keyboarding?
No, 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 music, music keyboard.
Oh, it's music.
Correct. Look at the picture in the middle. It's, it's not a computer. Sorry.
It's, it's little on my screen. But I have a small laptop. All right. Um, I'm wondering.
They have, they currently have that hall right now.
Okay, all right. So, so that, that's why it's not a room by itself. It's actually would be in that chorus room.
It's a question mark on this draft is what it is.
All right. So then, so then my question is, um, and maybe this is part of steam, um, instructional technology, like how is that incorporated?
In classrooms. In classrooms. In classrooms.
So just just classroom teachers teaching instructional technology? Or is there a separate?
No, it's what it is right now. Yeah.
So any thoughts of of having a an instructional technology, something, you know, project lead the way? Something even incorporated into the steam classroom?
I would think that could be the steam person, but.
Okay.
I think, look, if you build it, uh, it just, I I see the dollar sign. So I see Laura.
If you build it, they will come. All right. And then my last question, you have a prep room for this, and I'm I'm assuming the two science rooms are seventh and eighth grade. And that fifth and sixth would be within their own classrooms. Right, um. Although they'd be, you know, there there's a dedicated science teacher, fifth and sixth grade, right? And students would move. So, but there's, okay. I'm still confused. I'm I'm not sure that I'm completely sure the number of classrooms at each level in the middle school, because there were ten. Classrooms. And going up there, there's only two classes per grade. Right, so. That would be eight, and you've got two extra classrooms at the middle school level. You said ten. So are those two extra ones, are those science labs or?
You've got si- you've got, uh. Uh, and I'm I'm, I don't have this printout in front of me, but I believe it's ELA math, social studies. And then the science is shared. So ELA and math, two per grade level, right? And then five, six, social studies, seven, eight, social studies.
Still doing it that way, okay. Numbers are small.
You also might have a presentation on that in June, so.
Okay. Um, okay. So then the last question about the science rooms, you've got a prep room, which is really important. Um, at hall, there is a separate. Chemical closet that can be locked, that is like off limits of students. Um, the prep rooms are great to have students be lab assistants and help you um, to to do experiments, to set up. Um, experiments, et cetera, but there should be some sort of dedicated area where any type of chemicals, glassware can be locked. And off limits to students.
I will ask that question. I don't know how he would factor that into square footage. There might be a closet right there.
Okay. That's just a safety issue.
Yep.
Tracy. And then Herb.
I just had a question about the intervention room. So. When you were going through everything, the the wants and. The goods and the bads beginning, uh, you talked about. Something to do with the intervention rooms, and I know that, um. Right now in hall, or what used to be in hall and center when I had student, you know, children there, um. There was at least. One certified staff and one, um, maybe para- professionals for read, reading intervention. And then math intervention had a separate classroom. What's the model that you're planning the one room for?
So there's one there, but what we also have is between the extra spaces. So when you see resource space there. There, it's not a classroom, but it's a smaller space for meeting, just like that. So it's, it could be an intervention space. One, you know, breakout area could be an intervention space for maybe a tier two, could be tier one, two, but. The idea here is that there's one, and I believe, um, square footage wise, Tracy, I might be wrong, but I think this is a larger room. Um, that would be a shared, it could be a shared, again, it just depends on the layout of the building. But there needs to be an intervention space that's uh, really targeted. Um, and and depending on the size of that space and how it's broken up, it could be an um, a reading and a math room. It's just how we have one in right now.
All right, thank you. Yeah, just, it's, you know, as Brianna said, there. There's a lot of materials involved. You know, an intervention.
Agreed.
Clarify, these are specialized rooms. This is not include office space or the meeting rooms and other pieces. That's the next page or whatever. Okay.
You are correct.
Okay. Any more questions on this for the specialized rooms? Herb, thank you.
Answered it already. I didn't hear what you said, Michelle, but uh, I was one interested in the um, library media.
Coming.
I know that's coming up.
Yep.
Also rooms for the principal, for secretaries.
Coming.
Psychologists, social worker, custodians.
So there's still one, there's still one more page to go for space.
Including the cafeteria.
Correct. There's, there's more to come.
Donna has her hand up though, before you, before you change slides. Don't change slides yet. Donna?
Um, so my question has to do with, um. Giving kids some hands-on experience and this, you kind of touched on this a little bit with the steam. But as far as, you know, look, they need to know how to use a hammer the right way, a screwdriver. Like, base, I I'm gonna put it under, you know, basic survival skills in in the world of homeownership. Um, being responsible, you you know, like, not, it's not like an automotive class, but more of a. An introduction to the um, vocational kind of stuff. Um, because there's such a shortage of those. People that that have specialized skills and and that way. Just to even introduce them. So that they can start thinking about, you know, some, some kids just really like to work with their hands. Um, and just to give them those opportunities, would that fall under the steam?
Yes, and they have, I mentioned, I was gonna say this and I forgot, Donna, sorry. Um, cuz you and I had talked about this the other day, and that was a space that steam room currently has all sorts of tools in it, has saws, has. Um, we're not talking about band power saws or power sanders or anything like that. Um, but they have hammers, screwdrivers, you know, they have boards, they get all sorts of things in. Um, they might have drills in there. They have, you know, things like glue guns and, but that's the space. It would come out of steam. Um, and that's part of that, um, household management can be part of that as well. Like, I think you mentioned the other day, how do you change a? The 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 plate on for a light switch, things like that. Um, you know, that we can easily show. It's it's in an introductory section. By no means is it the uh, um, old shop class, though, that a whole school used to have.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We used, we used to have, uh, woodworking, I guess, and cooking. And sewing.
Yeah.
Personal finance. There are a lot of things that we have offered in the past, but they've been removed from the curriculum as far as I know.
Those are the things that fall into steam herb right now, and they're, uh, I think people are realizing that they, you know, I think. When they were removed from school, they probably shouldn't have been, um, and that's why the steam space is there. Um, but yeah, that's, that's the stuff that's in there.
I don't know what's happened. Every time I do that, like. I come off. Can you hear me?
Yeah, certain level, it's weird.
Can you hear me now, Herb?
You're very, you're. You're whispering.
I'm really not. I'm shouting at the screen. My face.
Better, Michelle, when you're a little closer.
I'm gonna move closer and hug the desk. Okay. Um, if there are no more questions, we'll move on to the next slide then.
Okay, so this is special education. So this is a a a shorter section. Um, you're looking at, you know, as you need self-contained spaces. Um, and TLT is toilet room. So there's one self-contained classroom. That is what I'll call up, you want something that's a little more self-contained than this one. And that's why you have a toilet room in this one, okay? But there's four self-contained classrooms, and remember when I said? That comment about special education teachers having spaces near their general education classrooms? These would be broken out by the the areas that they're in. So you'd have one, you know, if you did four sections of hallways or. Um, doesn't mean you're gonna have four sections of hallways, but, you know, however you did it, you would put those self-contained classrooms. Near those general education classrooms. There wouldn't be a cluster of four together. Um, you'd have two speech and language. Those are smaller office spaces. Same thing with a psychologist and social worker, same thing with a school counselor, same thing with OT therapy, the movement room. Um, and so this OT, you know, some of these are a little bit smaller. Uh, the self-contained uh, might not be a full nine hundred square foot, eight hundred square foot classroom. Um, but it might be a six hundred square foot classroom. Um, or five hundred, where these smaller, uh, these spaces would be smaller. You'd see. The the social worker just have an office space, but remember. Um, that oftentimes a school psychologist is is testing. Um, or they're doing groups and same thing with the counselor. And so this picture on the bottom, it's the same office space. But typically, they have a space where they'd have a desk, but they also have a space where they can have lunch with kids. Um, or comfortable space for kids to sit down and talk to them. And so this is, there's a, this is like, it's not wide. There's two separate pictures there. Uh, but that would be an example of a of school counselor's office. But it might be bigger than, like, you know, a a hundred and fifty square foot, two hundred square foot, um, office space, just an example. So. This covers our uh, our current staff. Questions about this? And it's pretty incredible OTPT room right there in top right.
Laura?
Yeah, my question was about the OTPT therapy room. So the this move, it's. It's all one thing, right? OTPT therapy and movement room. So this is where students would actually be having the therapy. Okay, all right.
Yep. And our two people right now really share a space now. It works. They've made it work very well, although, um. We keep taking, taking space from them and moving them, um, which is hard.
But this would be dedicated. And what, and and what is the scale thing in the middle?
So it's actually not a scale. We actually have one of these. It's a swing. Yeah, and and this is a one that's on a an arch stand. We actually, uh, had a a swing professionally installed by the folks that do the uh, adventure course up at uh, in stores. Uh, they came in and looked at our beams at Center School, and they actually installed one of these. Uh, you, the entire board could probably sit on the swing and it's, it it's strong enough. It's incredible. Um, but it's, it's one of the therapy uh, tools that we have. Keep going.
Yep.
Okay, here's the biggie. So administrative area. So in this section, you've got, um. Pretty straightforward, reception area, clerical area, talking about two staff members. You've got secure storage files. Um, spaces, you've got the administrative offices, you've got a conference, two conference rooms. The bathroom, the nurse's spaces in here. Um, you have one teacher's storage closet in here, just so there's enough. You've got a pair of storage space. I think that's really important that oftentimes gets missed. Um, when they come in, they need a place to hang their coat. Maybe they lock up. It's a a small locker or something like that. But it's built in, so they have some sort of space to put their stuff for the day. There are, um, four faculty toilet rooms. Um, there is a single user, two single user toilets. It seems like it's a lot, but it's spread out. It's not like in one specific spot. Um, there's a people services space in a, in a curriculum office. So basically, all of these spaces are, make up. Um, the administrative stat area. It doesn't mean, though, I wanna be clear about this, that. This would be all clumped together. Um, some places do have them clumped together. Some have them a little, there's, you know, two separate spaces. So. Maybe the the nurse's office in Tom High School, it's its own room. Um, uh, you, you know, you're actually the middle picture. Um, oh, there's no middle picture. It's the bottom right picture of the stairs. That's actually Tom High School. Um, it's their grand entrance, but the room at the top that you see is actually a workspace in a conference room. Um, all glass, all open. The bottom right of the picture, you can see the cafeteria, again, all glass, all open. And the bottom left, at the bottom of the stairs where it's a little bit darker, that's actually the main office. Um, so double vestibule, people get bu- buzzed into the office, then they enter down the bottom here. Um, the reason I put that picture on is just to show you again, natural light, how some of these things are connected. So. There is a conference room in the main office, but they also have a space up here that they could use for breakout spaces, they could use for meetings. Big enough, they have workspace, they have storage. All those things are just examples of how you break them out.
I have a quick question for clarification. Um, there's a staff toilet room, one, there's a faculty toilet room, there's four of them. And then there's two single-user toilet rooms. Those are all meant for the adults in the room, but I'm assuming that. The faculty toilet rooms are single-sex but multiple stalls, and that's why it says, doesn't say single user?
Um, I believe that is true.
Okay.
I'd have to look at the square footage. I don't have that in front of me, but uh, I believe that's the case of how they're built. And again, they're not all in like the main office area. They're spread out.
Right. Herb?
Yeah, Phil, on the last item listed, the uh, curriculum office, that'll be the office for our curriculum director.
So it's actually, um, she, because she's grant-funded, it's actually built for uh, any of our folks that are are coaches right now. Um, and so there's one office. For those people. It's typically gonna be two people. We would put them in the same office. It's just a little bit larger space.
Correct, curriculum coaches.
Yep, so we have two positions right now. Um, unless you decide to keep, uh, Aaron on longer than the grants. Uh, that position wouldn't be here when, if this, there was a new school or renovation. And basically what we did when we, when we built this, is I took our current staff. Um, and I went through and said, okay, that's where that person would be. That's where that person would be. Did we miss anybody? Um, do we miss any spaces? And that's how this is built.
Tracy.
Now, would the nurse's office be close to the principals? In other words, are they separate? Uh, areas. Are they located next to each other, Phil, in the specifications?
So there, it, there's nothing in the the ed specs that says they have to be near each other. Um, typically, that's something that designers do. They typically put the nurse's office so it's accessible. Um, again, and w- w- Talon, we 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 thought a lot about Birch Grove. It was a very nice building. But one of the things that we did notice was the nurse's office was like a half a mile away from one of the classes and. Um, because it's one level. If you build up, if you build a two-story building, I mean, your nurse's office is central. Um, it it's a little bit easier. If you build out and you do a one-level building. I would wanna see the nurse's office loc- located more central. Um, and that's kind of the point of, same thing with the main office. So if the main office and the nurse's office were central and then things went out from there. Um, kinda like fingers, um, that's kinda how, uh, you know, we would see it. But there's nothing in the ed spec. We would basically. Uh, you know, talk to the designer, say that, you know.
So when we meet with the architect or the designer, you'll suggest the location and the that particular arrangement or?
Yeah, I think the only thing we say in there is is uh, centrally located if if possible in the um, in the writing of the ed spec.
Okay, Tracy.
Just quick, wanna say. Thank you for, uh, as a former para and substitute for the. The addition of a place, cuz I don't really think I've ever been in a building where there was a space that was dedicated for that. So, thank you.
Yeah, we we got that feedback, um, a couple of years ago, and we put just a a a real small cube locker system into Center School. And they bring their own locks and they lock up their purse for the day. Just, you know, every, and and I sent out a message on staff appreciation. Week at the end of the week and just said, everybody has a role. Everybody's important in what we do. Um, and, you know, everybody, you feel more at home and and when you have a space. Uh, even if your space is just a a small locker, it's a recognition that you're important in in your, you know, important part of what we're doing. Uh, and educating kids. So, uh, I think it's important that it's in here, too.
Donna?
Um, the two administrative offices, what positions would be holding those?
So, uh, I don't know. One would be a principal, um, and then you would determine whether or not one would be a. An assistant principal, if you wanted that, a co-principal, no assistant principal, no co-principal, or um, a special education director.
Where, where is this? Is the special education director, we have one of those now, correct?
We do. That's Marsha, correct.
All right, so is the pupil services office, that's where she is now, correct?
Correct. That's what that is down there, correct? And that's more, that's not like one office. It's more of a. Correct, that's what that is down there, correct. And that's more, that's not like one office, it's more of a suite. Um it's it's the square footage would be larger than an office. So you would be able to determine if you wanted uh. You know, the number, and again, that's part of the staffing conversation. Um typically, and this is no secret, typically the number uh you would have in a building to have an assistant principal. You start hitting four hundred and fifty, five hundred students, you typically would have an assistant principal. Um your projections are on the lower side of the four hundreds. Sometimes when you see uh lower four hundreds, but it's a pre-K through eighth grade building, you would see in a principal, uh an assistant principal. When it's, if it were just elementary, p- pre-K through three, pre-K through four, you typically probably would not see in a uh an assistant principal. And that's just the change in age. So that'll be a a a longer decision for you in the future, when you, if you do something, when you have a staff discussion. But the space is there for now.
So. The at the reimbursement and stuff allows for two administrative offices, even though we have low numbers, but it won't let us do an extra classroom? I would kind of think that.
It's, it's about overall square footage.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brianna and then Herb.
I understand the benefit of a centrally located nurse. I also think it needs to have easy access to an exit. Um and then I just wanted to bring up again that um in regards to bathrooms. Uh it would behoove us to make them a changing table. Size um and not just in the little kid area, but it needs to be available for multi-age and multi-size people in our building. And then I wanted to ask about um public use bathrooms. Where would those go? Cause we're gonna have.
Okay, we're not done yet. We still have another page. Herb, you had your hand up though?
Uh yes, Phil, on the two conference rooms, I, I would expect one would be near the principal's office. The other one will be in the guidance area or someplace like that or?
Yeah, I think the second one is is probably a little less important. I think that you would definitely have a conference room in the main office. The second one could be uh flexible and again, probably centrally located. Um if possible in that design, but it doesn't, it wouldn't be in the main office, no.
Is there any particular size for?
They, they set the square footage for, I I I don't even want to guess. I think it was around four hundred or six hundred or something like that. It's a, it's a, it's not a giant space. This conference room actually, in this picture, is actually very large. Because they wanted an additional space that um could flex and they had the square footage to be able to do it. So this would actually be a really large conference room, but it's. You know, when you start having a meeting with ten or twelve people in it, um you need a decent space.
But it would be larger than the conference room at Hall School.
Uh I think so, and center, yes.
Yeah.
Of course, those, those rooms would be bigger if they weren't also being used for storage. So there's a variety of issues going on there. Okay, uh Anne, I see your hand.
Um so back to the book mall. Where would the book mall be?
Uh it, that's just wall space. That could be probably, and you're, you're gonna see it in a minute. Um I don't know if I have one more, two more slides, um but there's a section that is um a larger access area, we'll say. And that's where the the book mall will go. You'll see it in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
Is that an old hand from Brianna or is that new?
I have just one more piece and I don't know if it fits in under here. But in the same way that you had an area that was welcoming for the paras, for the staff closet now, Co. You also need a place that's welcoming for the community. If you have a volunteer coming in. Um you know, or uh your after-school program, you need both storage and places to hang up coats. In order for it to be welcoming to the community. So I don't know what that would look like, but I think we need to just put a pin in that and come back to it. To make sure there's both adequate storage and adequate, you know, for example, nobody wants to go to a playground where there's not seating for the parents. And I want to make sure that we're thinking about the parents as well, if we want to welcome them into the school.
Yeah, I think that we could do that in the main office. Yeah. Keep going?
Yep, next one.
Okay, so this is the common learning areas, okay? So this is where, uh and don't get too excited about my pictures because they're they're very grand.
You're teasing us, Phil. You should have given us like.
I did, I had fun when I found this one.
Should have been the other way around.
I found this one.
All in the middle there.
This was pretty impressive. This is a big school, but um so the learning commons area, there's one larger learning commons area. It's a, it's it it, when I say larger, I think it's, it was a couple thousand square feet. Um that's where we, and we separated out the steam room from what we would call a a maker space. This is like. A sub maker space, so there could be a small section that, and when we talk, call maker space in this lot, learning commons area. Think more Lego robotics, Legos, things like that. Um the TV studio would part of, be part of this learning commons. There'd be storage for it. This would also be part of the library, obviously. Um why it's, which is why it's larger, and this is where your book mall would go. Um it would just be a separate section than the main library. Uh this is where in this uh common areas, you'd have the cafeteria. We uh would design the cafeteria, we believe, for three lunch waves. Um so it's large enough to hold three lunch waves uh at a uh during the day. Um obviously, the more you shrink it, the more lunch waves you need. Um but that's something to look at. Obviously, you've got the kitchen and food storage. There's the gym and auditorium, uh gym slash auditorium, depending on how you do this, how you want it. Uh we'll talk about my pictures in a minute. You've got biz ed storage there, you've got the exterior storage uh on the outside. Um you've got two gym offices, which is basically what you have now. Um two, and this is your, your gym entrance for the public, right? So if someone's gonna use the gym at night, they're not going through your entire building, that would be in the design. But there'd be two public toilet rooms here. These would have changing tables in them. Um and then one family toilet room. So this is what you, you would see. So. I wanted to talk through what the pictures were here. Um and the top picture here, the middle schools, uh middle school and high school. The bottom picture is a high school. Um the top picture there, just to give you a sense of, you can do a pretty large, um what we'll call auditorium space. It's not cushion chairs, it's not the same as an auditorium with with uh chairs that are always there. But that's your cafeteria. You have a cafeteria with a stage that can be used. Um it's what I had the intermediate school in Tallon. Um of course, the high school had its own cafeteria uh um auditorium. So. There's pros and cons. If you build an auditorium, my suggestion would be to rent it out. Um because the amount of time that you would actually use your auditorium as an auditorium with those cushion seats is uh. It's not as much graduations, maybe whole school assemblies where that would be an appropriate space, but it's not used as much as you think. The middle pi- picture here with the sky, um actually Tallon Middle, uh Tallon High School's library. Um and I'm just, it was really to show you all the natural light in the space, but that's kind of a learning commons. That's how you would do it. So there's some offices off there. There's, you know, you could have the maker space off of that, that's smaller. You could have the TV studio. The um picture on the bottom right is actually, again, the Tallon uh high school bottom. So you can see the box office is right there and the auditorium is behind it, but just gives you the sense of where they come in. Into that, it's a very grand foyer. Um and I'm not recommending that, I'm just showing you for reference. Um the cafeteria is right there and the waves off. The bottom I actually found uh very recently. Um i- and I was so delighted when I saw it, I can't imagine how much this cost. However, I was really impressed because I didn't know it existed. This right here, picture to the right, is this. These are actually cloth seats. Um and they fold up like bleachers. Um really, really impressive. So if you wanted something like that, I have no idea what cost is. It's something you could uh investigate and ask about. Um I don't know if they would even say, we're not reimbursing that. I don't know that. But I was trying to find solutions that were space-saving. Um and without adding an auditorium with providing the feeling of an auditorium. Um and what I'm gonna do here, I'm gonna escape for just a second because I think this will help you. We're gonna make this like this first. So you can, can you see that a little bit better? But basically, it's folding chairs and and it it's steps and it all just folds right into the wall there. It's pretty wild. I've never seen anything like that. So there's possibilities out there. It's something that, you know, you could look at. Um you know, that we can investigate, but I figured I would show it just to say there's options out there. Without having a full-time auditorium space, um that probably doesn't get used a lot. Um that uh probably wouldn't be approved by OSCGR. Um and would be a huge killer to your square, square footage. Um this is, could be a potential solution if you wanted that feel. Questions about this section?
Donna has her hand up?
I am really loving those chairs. Having um had my back get. Obliterated by the bleachers at uh Hall on more than one occasion. And seeing pe- grandparents in that way, trying to get into them in that way. Um I would say. Even if they reconfrig your hall, maybe there's a shorter stack of those, because those look like it would be way too. Far out, but um don't lose that picture or wherever it's from, because that that. To me, that's a game changer right there, is the chairs.
Laura?
Yeah, I was wondering about locker rooms.
There are, the state is typically not reimbursing for locker rooms right now. Um and so they're not in here. There's very few, very few uh kids that use locker rooms now. Um they're not built into this.
So are kids not, they don't change for PE? They just wear their everyday clothes? So that's why they stink when they come back to class, especially seventh grade, let me tell you.
I, I think, I don't know why they, they, I, I don't know if it's a space saver now. Um and and again, it it's hard to speak the past practice because of the per- the individual that's no longer at OSCGR. It can be a question that we ask, but again, when we're trying to save square footage, it's one of those that we're, you know, one of those decisions. Um but typically, people are not doing uh locker rooms anymore.
So will, will the new school, if it's renovated or, you know, whatever. Um continue to be um an emergency shelter for the town?
So.
Because when, when we had, I, I think it was, you know, it was Irene and the act, the, I think it was October. Anyway, it was, you know, emergency shelter and.
Right.
I remember showering in the locker rooms because I had no water in my home.
I think if you renovate Hall, it probably uh could be. Um what they did in 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 Birch Grove is um. The main hallway bathroom, when you walk or in the building, does that's an emergency shelter for them. They actually, they're airport-style bathrooms, so they're just open, you go left or right. Um uh and they actually flip-flopped at one point. It was kind of strange. Um uh Brianna did not like that. Yeah, so one, one bathroom was like, you know, opposite is crazy, but they put showers in in uh behind a door at the. Backside of the ba- that main bathroom. So there was a single stall shower that could be used as an emergency shelter. One in the men's room, one in the women's room, boys and girls. Obviously, it wasn't used during the day, just during the school day. But it was there as part of their emergency shelter. Um and you could build that small space into one of your bathrooms. Or two of your bathrooms.
Uh Donna and then Brianna.
So if there's no locker rooms. How do the students who participate in the after-school sports? Like, winter time ba- is basketball time, you have to wear shorts. But they should not be wearing shorts to school in the winter time. That's not. Um I wouldn't think that that would be a particularly good idea. So is there changing rooms so that things don't fall where they don't belong? Well, somebody, I mean, I wouldn't want the kids to have to change in, in a regular restroom. Because things could end up where they don't need to be and cause plumbing issues.
Yeah, and some of those single-use rooms, that's what they do, the, like the family toilet room. Um I think that's what they do now, honestly. A lot of kids do not change. Uh at the middle school, when they have sports, they wear their shorts underneath their sweatpants and they wear them all day long. Um and again, you're writing these ed specs. If you want locker rooms in here. Um and you want to make them smaller, uh you know, maybe you don't put six banks of lockers or ten banks of lockers in each one. Maybe you just, maybe you don't have lockers at all. Maybe it's just a space to change. Um you, that's why you're making these decisions. If you want to do that, um you can write them in here. And then look at your square footage and go, what's the impact? That's up to you.
Brianna, I see your hand up?
Yes, it actually is. Um and so our musicians can. Potentially leave their instruments in storage in the band room when they arrive for the day, right? So I'm picturing like a sixth grader with a tuba and a bag for the after-school baseball game. And so is there some way we can make it? I mean, I get the whole locker room, things have changed. Um I know EO with COVID, they were shut down completely, so the kids had to find ways to work with it. And my child in particular, of course, had to carry around swim gear for days on end, from class to class to class to class. It was ridiculous. So is there some way we can offer the kids storage for their sports bags, their gear? Because it's not gonna fit in their regular classroom lockers and or there's not enough room. Maybe it could, but it's hard to jam, you know. Plates and everything else, shin guards. Um if not a locker room, can they have a place to drop off their stuff in the morning? So it's not banging around everywhere.
Yep, we, I put that on this as a note.
Okay, and thank you. And we'll put a trailer uh behind every school bus, so the kids cannot whack each other also with.
Great. Thanks.
Anne?
So that brings up the question of um storage within the classrooms. Maybe we're not quite there yet. But I, um I'm, I understand how the, it seems like each of the younger children will have a little cubby. Well, how does that work at the middle school? Would they store their things in their home room or how does that work? Or lockers in the hall or how would that work?
You could do either. So you could write lockers in or or no lockers at all. Um and you could pick what grade levels you want them for. That's up to you.
Cause that might address some of um Bree's issues if they had a locker.
Most of the lockers, the problem with the lockers is the, the, they're the narrow lockers. It's so hard. I mean.
Yeah.
Soccer players don't carry a lot of gear, but they, it's a backpack and you can't put a backpack in those skinny lockers. It doesn't work. So I will, I will look into that. I don't know what the answer to that one was. I don't remember um honestly what I wrote. Um at this point in time. So I have to look, and I'm curious to know what grade I wrote it in. I'm, I might have only written it for seven, eight lockers. Um and no lockers for K six.
It probably depends if they stay in their classroom all day or not. Um you know, the young children are in their room all day, so they're, they're fine with a cubby at the back of the classroom. But I think the children, or when the older kids are moving around, it prevent, presents different issues.
Uh Donna and then Herb.
I know that at one point in time at EO, they had special wide lockers. That you didn't get to keep all year long, un- unless you were um. In in the ag program because of having to have the extra footwear and things like that. But they had it where um. The kids could kind of switch out. So if if you were playing in a particular season and you needed the extra space. You had it for a short period of time. So it wouldn't be as expensive as providing all the students with. Extra locker space all year long, but it would provide um if there was something going on where a child needed. Some extra storage space, although I think too at the high school level, they would carry everything with them. Cause they didn't want to waste their time going to the lockers. So it, you know, it may be a moot point.
A lot of middle school students still do that too. And no book bags, just a pile of books and notebooks. That's how they walk.
Herb?
Yeah, so most of the gyms I've ever seen is a, there's some kind of locker room and bathrooms adjacent to the gym itself. But in the picture that we have on the screen here is, it's really elaborate. And so is that a high school gym? And, and what's the size of the gym auditorium that we're planning here?
So.
Size of what we have now?
Um, it might be a touch bigger, but I think it's around the size we have now. It's whatever it is for regulation basketball is typically what you do. I think the size of the gym is around the whole school gym size. And I don't know, the, the bleachers that pull out there, that picture, I don't know if that's a cafeteria or a gym, Herb. I have no idea. Uh, I would think it would be very loud if it were a gym just because of the open railing at the top, but that would be the same thing for cafeterias. So um, I'm not sure. It, it, I guess the idea is you could, you could develop it as you wanted it. So if that was your cafeteria and you always only pull those out for special events, as long as you had, you know, a stage with it. That's something you could do. So.
Tracy?
You don't pull those out though. That's, they come out electronically.
Yeah, it's motorized. Yep.
Go ahead, Tracy.
Oh, I just wanted to say, well, I agree with Donna that those seats look a lot more appealing than the bleachers or even the metal chairs. But I also agree with Herb and the fact that an auditorium with the kind of performances that are done by our music department and our drama department. When I went to Great East Festival, that was in a school with a nice auditorium. And we had just had a concert from our kids in the, in the gym at Hall. It was a total different sound and it was amazing to hear the kids in a real auditorium. So I, I support putting it as an option as seeing what the public would say and it'd be a place that could be rented out because our kids don't get to hear what they sound like unless they go to Great, Great East Festival in a real auditorium setting. And I think our drama department could benefit from it as well.
Anne?
One option for the auditorium is if it could be donated, you know, then we could you know, have it and then rent it out or whatever. I think that's.
Anne, are you offering to donate an auditorium?
She's got the glow of the light over her head, so I was wondering myself.
Our conversation today is not about money. It's about what we need or don't need. But of course, that would, that would be great. It would be wonderful if somebody would donate the whole school while we're at it. I'll put their name on.
Seriously, if someone really loved the arts and wanted to support the arts and you know, had, had something to donate and even if part of it, and then we could pay for the rest of it by renting it out. So I don't, I don't think that it will be able to come out of our square footage, but I think that might be a way that we might be able to, to have our auditorium.
I, I can show you, I mean, when you, we can put the numbers in. You know, that's not an issue, putting the numbers in to show you what, where the square footage falls when you put it in an auditorium in. When you put an extra classroom in, you do those things, you'll be able to see that. And you'll be able to get a sense of, okay, that granted, that's our ed spec, that's what we'd love. But I also think you have to, even though you're only developing the ed spec, um, you have to be realistic with the size of square footage, understanding what your square footage allotment is based upon your enrollment. Because that is what you get reimbursed on. You know, our, our reimbursement is better than some and it's, it's worse than some. But you know, when you have fifty-five percent new, that's if you are at your square footage, what the state is going to allow you. Um, and as, as you go over that, they knock you down. So you know, is the town going to support a building? So we'd love a, an auditorium. Are they going to support it if you're at thirty percent? Those are things that you'd have to, you know, think about as you finalize your ed specs for what you want to put forward. If, I think that is one area though, that you could ask to separate out. As long as there was an understanding that if it's, if it passes with the auditorium, this would be a reimbursement rate. If it fails because it's, we don't want the auditorium, this would be a reimbursement rate. You could build it that way.
Okay, I do see two more hands up, but I also want to recognize that we've been at this for quite some time now. It is now ten of nine.
One more slide and it's.
You're torturing me, Phil. You're torturing me. Um, there are no decisions we have to make. There are no decisions we have to make today. Oh, and you lied. I just saw two slides.
There's actually three more slides.
Okay, so, so are there decisions we must make tonight?
No, I think I, what I wanted to show you was all, I, I think what's important, again, we're talking about programs and spaces and I can blow through these. Uh, and, and because this is really just the, you know, th- this counts in your square footage. So any of the electrical closets, mechanical closets, you need fire protection. All of that goes into your square footage, you know, IT workroom. So there's nothing exciting on this, right? Um, your walls and your stairways come into that. Then the exterior that goes into your ed specs is your soccer fields, you know, your field space and your parking. We write that into your ed spec, but that doesn't impact your square footage. These things here all impact your square footage. And that is probably, if you're going to take anything away tonight, know that we all have the dream of, wow, I'd love to have extra spaces. I'd love to give, you know, Phil Stevens, a wonderful office in this new building. Note, there's no superintendent's office in this building. And it's because of the square footage hit that you take. I don't think it's worth it. Um, I don't think it, it, it's the right move. So it's not in here. Um, and so you are going to have to, once I, I wanted to show you this first without the numbers because I didn't want you to start trading. The next move would be for you, and I'll go to this last slide to show you, is really to show you the full document now. If you, I will add in your auditorium. Um, I will add in the additional classroom just to show you. Um, and the space where the, where we had the library commons, um, there was a special ed suite that we had built out. Um, and there was a classroom in that, that was my additional and I can show you that in the layout. So I'll show you the full document. And what I'll do is you can go through it. There's a lot of detail in it. There's all the square footages that are in there. Um, our next step would be to gather community feedback. And make your final adjustments and then approve it. Again, you want to approve it so that it's something that's doable. Um, whether it's a renovation or a new building, it's not that it's doable. If it's renovated halls, that meaning it's doable cost-wise, you're not asking for a hundred thousand square foot building because you're not going to get a hundred thousand square foot building. Unless Anne is making a big donation.
Donna, I see your hand is still up. Um, I'm not sure if you had a specific question or a generic one?
It was something to think about.
Okay, so we don't have to go back to a certain screen. Okay.
No, no, don't have to go back to a certain screen. Um, when we were discussing the auditorium, it might be more prudent not to have an auditorium, but to plan ahead and maybe rent from Talend the three or four nights a year that we would need an auditorium to give the kids the better experience, but not impact um, the cost and and the square footage and the reimbursement and everything that goes along with it. You know, they can practice at our school, but then have maybe a, a rehearsal at the other school. Cause I know the kids stay late for stuff and, and just approach it in a different way. So they still get the experience, but we don't end up with the building and the maintenance and all that goes along with it and the extra costs.
Donna, I think that's a great comment to end on tonight because it's about creativity. Some of this is going to be about where can we be creative? Where can furniture take the place of it in extra square footage space? How can we make the best use of hallways, et cetera? So as we dig down into this deeper, I think the mindset you just brought to that is really the right way we need to approach this. We can't start each of us horse trading. Well, I don't think we need a nurse's waiting room. We really need this. You know, we're going to get to that point. We're going to have to set some priorities. And this is not going to be just one more meeting to get through this. This is, there's a lot to digest here and a lot to think about and a lot of, of our negotiating, setting priorities together as a group. So this is, this is a not near finished. Laura?
Just a quick question. I'm wondering if, because we went through the outdoor part very quickly and you said it didn't add to the square footage, um, but I'm wondering if you had an inner courtyard. Would that be part of the square footage? It's, it's just where the building is, the footprint of the building. Okay.
What it does add to though, Laura, is the cost because exterior walls are much more expensive than interior walls as our windows.
So.
And also more to heat. So for example, if you had a building that looked like an octopus with eight wings sticking out, great natural light, expensive to build.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's what they're promoting right now.
I'm not saying, I think that would look fantastic.
The courtyard gives you more natural light.
But if I had a choice between an extra preschool classroom and, and an octopus, well, maybe we'll go with a four-legged dog instead of an octopus.
I'm, I'm thinking more donut. I'm thinking more donut.
Whatever. Okay, um, Phil, how much time do you think we're going to, can we get another meeting in before the end of June, all of us, before vacation starts making it really?
Yeah, no, I think so. I, I think what I'm going to try and do, because I, I needed your feedback one more time with, just to make sure I have all the spaces. I can, it's going to take you a couple of weeks to go through this document. It's, it's, it's not. It's, so it's going to take you a while. Um, I think if we can sneak in a meeting sometime early June, if that's possible.
I don't think early June's going to give us enough time to get through it. It's already mid-May. So.
Mid to late June's better.
The question, the question is, again, sometimes we, we haven't always had our summer meetings. Sometimes we cancel July and keep August or vice versa. We could do this instead of our regular July meeting if there were a substantial number of other things, or we can do this at, you know, another meeting. We all have to be present at the meeting to make it a meaningful meeting. We can't do this, you know, like originally, the very first meeting when you were doing the introduction, that was different. We're to the point now where we, we really need to have um, all seven of us present.
Yeah, you're going to need your ed specs. I think this is the moving target, right? So the SBC may need your ed specs before that. So to go to the state, we have to give them something raw. Like they have to understand what ballpark we're in. So your next meeting, you really need to solidify, yeah, we understand the ballpark, you know. The, the dreamland hundred thousand square foot building is, is dreamland. And what's reality? Is reality seventy thousand square feet? Um, and how much over our allotment is that? And what will the state allow us to have? You want to know that. And the reason you go into the state is you go in to kind of find out what they'll support. And I think the benefit for us is we're, we're trying to blend two buildings into one. It's a, it's less of a cost for them in the long run because they're only providing support on one building then, uh, in the future, not two. Right? Um, and we saw that in the roof project. So maybe they'll give us a little bit more, but if they say, no, we're going to stick to what your eight-year high is, you may have some tough decisions and, and, and the town, you know, SBC and the town may say we're, this is what we believe we need for a building. Um, and the challenge when you're small, uh, and we heard this from OSCGR is when you're under, you know, four hundred people, it's hard to build a school, especially with a middle school in it. Because you're small, because you need a science lab, because you need intervention spaces and you need a middle school gym. Those are things you need in there. There's no fluff in this. I'll tell you that much.
So we don't have a date for the meeting in July at this point, correct?
No, I, I mean, if, I mean, if you want, I can just have Brenda put out a Google calendar and everybody drop in some dates where they are available and figure it out.
I think that might be the only way to do this because there's a lot of moving parts with this and we may need more than one session. I'm not going to rush this just because we have a meeting with someone at the state. They can wait.
Doesn't need to be finalized for them either, but we need to give, like, it doesn't have to be voted on at that point, but they need some idea, like where, where are you, what are you thinking? What range you in?
Um, Michelle, as a member of the, the building committee, I think it's, it would be really great if we could give them um, as much as we possibly can by July to take to the, to the state because this is, this is kind of why we're held up. And, um, you know, we're, we're holding up the whole process, not us, not we, but um, the process is going slowly. And I think as soon as we get the ed specs, then I think we can really begin to move forward a little more quickly. So, um, I would encourage us if we could to try to get as much of it finished as soon as we could. And I'd love to set that July as a a deadline. So that we can, it, it will also help us to make the decision about whether we're going to have two options or one option. I think the state's going to help us to make that decision. Um, but in order to make that decision, we're going to have to see how both the renovation and the new building fit um, are able to hold our ed specs.
Right.
Okay, and as long as we don't have to have a final vote, we're not going to be, you know, absolutely held to, you know, it's, it's the start of the conversation. I'm fine with moving the conversation forward. I just don't want to rush it to meet an arbitrary deadline.
No, that's an initial meeting. Did I, and I, um, my Brian's brain is fried, sorry. Brianna and Anne, did I say June with the state or July?
July.
Why?
I said July.
Ending was that they need June to take care of all of the schools that are already have been approved and they need their bonding.
So, and they haven't bumped that up. So if we have a reasonable number for them or, or a reasonable amount, reasonable amount of work done by that July date, I, it's not going to matter before that point anyways, to be honest with you, Anne. I mean, they're, they're holding it, not us.
Okay, so if you would have Brenda reach out to all of us, something that would be closer to a doodle poll is better where we can signify where we have time and where we're not available. And preferably not the night after our regular meeting. Brianna, go ahead.
Are we, Phil, on a, is there really a waiting list? I mean, I know you were asking if they can get SBC in sooner.
They're not responding, so that should tell you.
Well, that's the big thing. Okay, we are, uh, need to uphold that deadline, right? So can we work backwards and figure out when we need to have this?
That's exactly what I'll do. I'll make sure you have at least three weeks to look at the ed specs. And it's not the, it's a long document, but it's, it's, if you look at the Mansfield document, there's a lot of pages that are just a grid with the, you know, the space on it. It, it's, that's not the, the bulk of the work.
What will Mr. Pelman, what kind of time will he and the SBC need after they have ed specs in hand to prepare the documentation for state?
Not a lot.
Okay.
Okay, that's good.
Cause I go with them.
Good. Yeah, we need to like get this cooking. So that's good. All right.
Okay, last comment goes to Donna before we go to President to speak. Go ahead, Donna.
I, I just wanted to make sure. So we, you're going to get us a document. We need to read it. We're going to get together and meet again. Does this, doesn't this stuff go to the school building committee before it goes to the state? I just want to make, or does it go to the state and then the school building committee?
So basically what happens is you're in charge of approving ed specs. And then when you approve the ed specs, that's, and you can share the ed specs whenever you want. Um, if you're in a spot where you're like, hey, we can give them the ed specs right now. Honestly, the school building committee cannot do a lot until they hear from the state. The initial meeting with the state is just to talk to them through, here are two options that we're at right now. Option one is renovate Hall School. Here's the information. Option two, new school, new site. Here's the information. And give them all the details and, you know, you share the ed spec information. They're not going to read it cover to cover. They're going to say, what are you looking for for square footage? You got anything wacky in there? No? Okay, so yes or no, we think, you know, this site is good or, or, or not. If they say, nope, we would support either one, then that's where the SBC team will then take the two informations, uh, you know, pieces of information and then go public with them and say, okay, townspeople, we want your feedback. We have two opportunities here, options here. Option one is renovate Hall School. Uh, here's a cost estimate with timeframe. Option two, build a new school on a new site. Here's the cost estimate. Here's the timeframe. Knowing that either of those options, the ed spec would be applied. But it's just an initial meeting to get, uh, you know, put your foot in the water with them and they just don't want to see us until July.
Phil, do you need the ed specs for that meeting? Phil, do you need the ed specs for that meeting?
You, the, the most important thing that is that comes out of the ed spec, Anne, is the square footage. So if you said, look, it, we're coming in with eighty-five thousand square feet and they looked at your enrollment study, they'd probably go, uh, I don't think so.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what you, why, a- and then you'd have to say, look, we have these special programs we've done or whatever it is. You'd have to defend it. Um, that's, they're not going to go through and go, okay, the bathroom is twelve by twelve. Why is it twelve by ten? They're not going to look at that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks.
Herb?
Uh, Phil, how soon will the uh, specs be available for us to peruse?
I got to finalize all the stuff that you gave me tonight, um, and uh, then I can get them to you. And that's where I'm going to work backwards from your timeframe. From July.
Okay.
As soon as I can, Herb.
Okay, so let's close this part of the discussion and we will move on to President to speak. We've had a number of people with us for the entire. Length of our evening, even though they've not been on screen, I want to give them a chance to participate and, and tell us what they're thinking if they'd like. Um, you have to either raise your hand using the reaction button or come on screen and wave at us so we know that you're there. Okay, going once. Going twice. We will have future meetings, so you're always welcome to come back and tell us again later. Oh, Mr. Toolish, you came off just in time. I'm assuming you came off and you're coming on screen because you have something you'd like to say. Is that right, sir? Please identify yourself and your address for the. Record. We can't hear you for some reason though, Ralph. You're not muted. Might be your microphone. Try it again.
It may be your headset that happens to my students.
If you unplug your headset, usually your, your laptop can pick it up. If you're on a laptop. So try unplugging your headset entirely. And then say something. We'll test for sound. Cause Ralph, can you say something? We can't hear you. Nope. Nope. Do you want to try unplugging your headset and seeing if that works? Because we can't hear you. Okay, feel free to write us, write us an email. Or come to our next meeting if you'd rather. Yeah. Is it something you think you're going to be able to fix, Ralph? Yes, no, hand signals? No. Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you. We can, we can do that from here. Um, hopefully we'll be able to, to um, hear from you. Or, or answer whatever questions you have if you write them to us or if you come to our next meeting. Okay, anyone else before we close the meeting? Okay, seeing none, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second because Anne's muted.
Donna, okay, all those in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying I am raising your hand.
I.
I opposed, abstentions, meeting is adjourned. Okay, thank you all.
Question?
Nine oh eight PM. Hold on one second.
Uh, Donna, the meeting is.